Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to start. I think we have most everybody in. The few that are left that are still being checked in. We're going to begin so we can get started. A quorum being present, this special town meeting will now come to order. We have a return of the warrant by Constable Ron Spear of Spear Constable Service. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the special town meeting so that we may open the annual town meeting. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. A quorum being present, this annual town meeting shall now come to order. We have a return of the warrant by Constable Ron Spear. As required by Massachusetts General Law, Chief of the Fire Department Scott Duffy asked that I point out the exits from the auditorium in case of an emergency. Obviously, the ones you came in through, and the one to my left, and the one to my right. I'd like to welcome everyone that's come out tonight. Bigger crowd than we had at Fort Myers at the Red Sox this year. On behalf of the town of Rockland, I'd like to thank you for attending the meeting this evening so that the town can continually continue to successfully operate during the next new fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2023. In the annual town meeting, when I come to the budget article, it has been the practice for the past three years to take one vote for the total amount of the budget. This saves calling for 56 separate votes. However, if someone has a question, a concern about a particular budget or budgets, they will be allowed to talk or ask questions about said budget. We'll then take that budget or any budgets, one by one, and vote on the total amount on page 40. When we arrive at Article 3, I would have you take a couple of minutes to allow you to look at the budget article beginning on page 15. Then Town Administrator Doug Lapp will give a short overview of this current budget. After that, if there are no questions or objections, or we've covered everything, we will vote on the total budget listed on page 40. We also vote on the Water Department Budget Article 10 and the Sewer Department Budget Article 11 as their funds come from water and sewer revenue. Is Tim White present tonight?
Yes.
Tim, could you come up here? And Father Hickey, would you also... Father Hickey, you can stay down there or come up here, whichever you'd like to do. Would everyone please stand and remain standing for the salute to the flag, the invocation, and a moment of silence? And, Tim White, the salute to the flag is yours first.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Will you all join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Father Hickey? Father Hickey was gracious enough to come out tonight. He's a very busy person at Holy Family Church. Over the years, we kind of missed him a few years because of COVID and other health-related issues, but we're very happy that he was able to come out tonight and give the invocation. Father Hickey?
It's the first time I got a clap for saying a prayer. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, Lord God, we are asking you for a simple gift. As you were with our ancestors in that early time when this colony was founded and ultimately became this country, so may you be with us today. We ask you that the rancor and anger that seems to be present in our culture may not be in this room tonight, but rather there may be serenity and peace, and a zeal to understand each other's viewpoint, to be able to discuss wisely and beautifully as you have led us to be. For we are surprisingly the continuation of the oldest democracy on earth, and this is the most manifest, basic form of democracy in the planet. We thank you for that. May we be worthy of this gift, and may you bless us all through Christ our Lord.
I would now ask for a moment of silence for all of our deceased former-town employees and officials who faithfully served the town of Rockland, for all of our deceased veterans who served in the armed forces, and to all our deceased residents who died since our last annual town meeting. Please be seated. The special town meeting and the annual town meeting are being videotaped by WRPS. It is required that all non-registered voters present must sit in the forward rows down front to my left. If you wish to speak on an article, please raise your hand. Maybe some... I can see better now since we fixed the light. When I recognize you, please come down to one of the microphones. There is one at the end of both aisles, and state your name and address before speaking. Each speaker will be allowed up to five minutes when speaking on a budget item or article which is being acted upon. No speaker who has previously spoken on the same budget item or article will be recognized until all others who wish to speak have had their opportunity. Now I'd like to introduce the people on the stage. To my left is our town clerk, Liza Landy. At the other table is the town administrator, Doug Lapp. Town Council Attorney, John Clifford. Land Use Council Attorney, Tony Riley, who will also be here. His attorney, Robert Galvin, will be here later. And our town accountant, Scott Curtis. I'm not sure if State Representative Dave Decosse or State Senator John Keenan are in the audience. If they are, please raise your hand. I'd like to now introduce the newly-elected officials, who would please stand. And with the audience, please hold your applause until I have read the entire list. Select Board members Michael O'Laughlin and John Elland. Board of Assessors, Dennis Robson. Board of Health members, Robert Stevens, a three-year term, and Ken Lewis, a one-year term. Housing Authority member, John Davis. Library trustees, Deb Kulsy and Christine Goethea. Park Commissioner, Brian Martin. Planning Board member, Charles Williams III. School Committee member, Jamie Hennessy. Sewer Commissioner, Charles Hesion. And Water Commissioners, David Saucia, a three-year term, and Deborah Duner, a one-year term. Thank you very much. Now I'd like to introduce the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee, and please hold your applause on that until I've read all the names. The chairman is John Pumphrey. The vice chair is Julia Schaefer. Robert McDonald. Susan Gaines. Cara O'Neill. Megan Rooney. William Stewart. And our newest member, who's just graduating from Providence College, Nick Labalita. I'm very happy to see somebody so young wanting to serve on a town committee. And Bill Principi, who also serves on the Capital Planning Committee. And Linda Sternfeld, who also serves on the Capital Planning Committee. And the members of the Capital Planning Committee, other members are Christopher Fulton, Richard Harris, the chairman, Douglas Wallo, and Lauren White. And I would give a round of applause for the work that they do. And I do have many openings on the Finance Committee. Anybody who's interested, you can contact me, or you can contact the town clerk's office. The town of Rockland should be proud of the citizens who volunteer to serve as members of the Finance Committee and Capital Planning Committee. I would like to recognize two members of the Finance Committee. The first is Mr. Joseph Gambon, who served 14 years and has just resigned. And Mrs. Julia Schaefer, who first began serving in 1988, as also known as Julia Ashy, except for a short break, who is resigning from the town meeting. I want to thank you both for all the time you've given to the Finance Committee over the past number of years. Thank you very much. In many of the articles tonight, you will see that anything... The Capital Planning Committee has reviewed articles with capital expenditures over $50,000 and a useful life for at least five years with inclusion in a five-year capital improvement plan. Many of those articles are in the town meeting tonight and were required to be reviewed by the Capital Planning Committee, which they were, as explained by Chairman Richard Harris at a recent selectmen's meeting, and were entered into the warrant by the Board of Selectmen. I would now swear in my tellers, because tonight we do have a lot of funds that are coming from a stabilization fund, marijuana host community agreement special purpose stabilization fund, and they will all require a two-thirds vote. I would hope to get as many unanimous votes as I can. But now, would my three tellers come forward? All right. This is section one. You've got section two, and you have section three. Right here. I swear that I promise to do an accurate count.
I do.
I would now entertain a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting for the purpose of returning to the special town meeting.
Motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. A quorum being present, I will now call the special town meeting to order. And if you'll turn to page six... We only have a few articles. I'm sorry, page five. Article one, will the town vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $1,760.52 as follows for the fiscal year 2023 budgetary items or take any other action relative thereto? It's explainable before you. These items must be addressed as part of this fiscal year, requested by the Board of Selectmen, recommended approval by the Finance Committee, the funding source fiscal 23 budget. All those in favor, we need a nine-tenths vote. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article two, will the town vote to authorize the accounting department to pay the following unpaid bills of prior years of June 30th, 2022 from the current year departmental budget as listed or take any other action relative thereto? There are three bills, one for drainage, one for computer services, and one for a recording secretary. The above-mentioned invoices were unpaid June 30th, 2022, and were not requested to meet in time to meet the deadline to be paid via encumbrances. The invoices should be paid as soon as practicable to minimize hardship for the vendors. Requested by the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee represents approval, funding source fiscal year 2023, and I need a nine-tenths majority on that. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article three, will the town vote to transfer from available funds a sum of $299,407.89 as follows for the fiscal year 2023 snow and ice deficit or take any other action relative thereto? These items must be addressed as part of the fiscal year budget, requested by the town accountant, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article three signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article four, will the town vote to transfer from available funds a sum of $10,000 as follows for a fiscal year 2023 emergency management portable lighting grant match or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency, these items must be addressed as part of fiscal year 2023 budget to receive a grant from the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency for portable emergency lighting, requested by the town accountant, approval by the Finance Committee, funding source is free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article four signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article five, will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $250,000 for unanticipated and extraordinary special education costs or take any other action relative thereto? These unanticipated costs must be paid in the current fiscal year, requested by the school committee, recommended by the Finance Committee, and funding source is free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article five signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you've approved that article. I would entertain a motion to dissolve the special town meeting.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor of dissolving the special town meeting signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. A quorum is present. I will now call the annual town meeting back to order. The chair will recognize Linda Sternfeld from the Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to take all articles in the order in which they are printed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of taking the articles in order signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote.
I make a motion that the first action on each article will be on the Finance Committee recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote.
I make a motion to reconvene the annual town meeting tomorrow night, May 2nd, at 7:30 PM in the same auditorium if we do not finish tonight.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of that motion signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. All right, now we're ready to begin the annual town meeting. Excuse me?
I think you've got to calm down. I think that's a missed call.
All right, the last one?
Second.
Can we calm over, please?
Take the articles in order or the first action of the Finance Committee recommendation?
Well, continue what you're doing tonight. It doesn't finish tonight.
Okay. All those in favor of returning tomorrow night as the motion to reconvene tomorrow night at 7:30 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? All those in favor of reconvening tomorrow night at 7:30 signify with a show of hands Section one? Section two?
Sixty.
Sixty?
Sixty.
Section three?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Forty-two.
Forty-two?
Yes.
All those not in favor of reconvening tomorrow night, hold your hands up until the counter Section one?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six?
Yes.
Okay. Section two? Section three? The vote not to reconvene tomorrow night is 163, and that wins over the yes votes, 163 to 141. So right now, if we don't... Do we have another motion? Because if not, if we leave here tonight and it's not done, then that, I guess, will leave to the Board of... I don't know who would leave it to the Board of Selectmen. I'm all for it. Let's go. Excuse me, if you want to speak.
I'd like to make a motion to do the fire station now. Can I do that?
We already took a motion to take the articles in order.
I made a motion to recount the motion to take the articles in order.
Okay, if we want to reconsider that motion, it's going to require a two-thirds vote. Am I correct, Mr. Counsel?
No.
No? Majority?
Motion to reconsider is two-thirds.
Okay, we can reconsider it. Do I have a motion and a second, I assume?
Second.
Okay. Now, this is going to require a two-thirds vote to reconsider that motion. Pardon me? I mean my counters here. All those in favor of reconsidering the motion to take up... To not... To go in order, to change it from going in order, hold your hands up until the counter is passed by. Excuse me? All those in favor of reconsidering the motion, which is what these two people made a motion and seconded. All those in favor of reconsidering the motion of taking the articles in order, that means we're going to turn it over. You're not getting it. I know, it's confusing. The original motion which passed... The original article that... Motion that was passed was to take the articles in order. If you want to reconsider that article, you have to vote yes to reconsider it so we can bring it back up. Then, if it's... If you get a positive... If you get more than a two-thirds vote to do that, then we can have a motion to not take the articles in order.
Mr. Moderator?
Thank you.
I was incorrect. It's a majority vote.
Now it's a majority vote? Okay, it's a majority vote. I'm not the counsel. I'm only the moderator. So that everybody understands it clear, what I'm calling... The first vote is to reconsider the article. If you want to reconsider it, you have to vote yes. If you don't want to reconsider it, you'll eventually vote no. Okay, all those that want to reconsider the motion to take the articles in order signify Section one? Section three?
Forty-five.
All those not in favor of taking the article... Section one?
Twenty-five.
Yeah. Section two?
Thirty-four.
Section three? You have voted to reconsider that motion. Now, I assume we're going to have a motion to take the article out of order. That's...
They take the article out of order.
Which article? The fire station?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four? Okay. Thank you. Do I have a... I had a second? All those in favor of taking Article 84 and do it now signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 84. This is the motion that has to be read, and which I will read. Move that the... Move that 33,200,000 is appropriated to construct, equip, and furnish a new Rockland fire station located at 99 Church Street, which will include the demolition of the Lincoln School and all associated site work and infrastructure. That to meet the appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow 33,200,000 under General Laws Chapter 44, Section 7, Paragraph 1, or any other enabling authority, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project, provided, however, that this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by General Laws Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 1/2, amounts required to pay the principal of and interest on any of the borrowing authorized by this With that, I need a second before there is any discussion. We have a second. We have discussion. Chair recognizes Chief Duffy.
Good evening, folks. My name's Scott Duffy. I'm your fire chief for your fire department. I reside at 86 Stanton Street in town. I am a resident. At this time, Town Administrator Doug Lapp and I would like to do a quick presentation for you on the fire station as proposed for this article. Mr. Lapp?
Thank you, chief. Can everyone hear me okay? Great. Before I begin, I want to respectfully ask that after this article is voted, whichever way the vote goes, if everybody would still please stay for the remainder of town meeting... way the vote goes, if everybody would still please stay for the remainder of town meeting. There's a lot of important articles, the general fund budget, the water budget, the sewer budget, all of our capital articles. It's very important that everybody stay for the entire entirety of town meeting so we can vote on all the articles. Thank you. I'd like to begin with what I think is a little bit of the elephant in the room. I know I've received a few questions about this. Why are we talking about this tonight and voting this at town meeting when it had recently failed at the ballot? So I'm going to try to explain this as clearly as I can. These types of projects, which we refer to as a debt exclusion, where we're proposing to raise taxes to pay for a capital project, these require two separate votes, a successful, simple majority vote at a ballot, and a two-thirds approval at town meeting. The decision to place this article on the town meeting warrant was made before the election occurred on April eighth. So we do understand that that election did not vote in favor of the article, but again, this decision to put it on the warrant was not made after that to try to pull a fast one, as as some folks have asked. It's part of the process. So to recap, the election on April eighth, it was roughly a fifty-five, forty-five split. And you can see on the graph, nine hundred five people voted no at the ballot, seven hundred sixty-five voted yes, relatively low turnout at a ballot. If this article passes tonight by at least a two-thirds majority voting in favor, then the Board of Selectmen could, and I want to stress, could, it's not certain, that's a decision they would have to make in a publicly posted meeting, but if it passes by a two-thirds majority vote, the Board of Selectmen could call a special election to have a second ballot. And the logic with that is, if there was a failed ballot vote on April eighth and then a successful yes vote on May first, it's sort of a split decision, it's, you can almost think of it as a tiebreaker, what's the ultimate will of the voters. So that's why we're voting on this tonight. I hope that's clear. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Fire Chief Duffy. He'll talk a little bit about the project need.
Thank you, Mr. Lapp. I like to walk around, so, so the need for the, the need for the new station. Currently, the fire station that we have was originally built in nineteen thirty-nine. That was under a federal grant through the New Deal in order to re-stimulate the economy back out of the Depression. Second part of that station was added on to. First part was a three-bay station. Second part is another three-bay station to come, to make the full six bays that you see now. That second part is built in nineteen seventy-eight. Again, that was done with federal grants through another stimulus program funds for work projects throughout the country. That fire station has served the town very well. They, it was thought out for the size of the town and for the size of the Fire Department and how busy that current department was back then. That was a well-thought-out building. Unfortunately, we as a modern-day fire station and Fire Department have outgrown that building. Apparatus is getting bigger. Personnel, we've, we've increased our numbers throughout the years, so personnel within the department. And Fire Department have, are catching up to the times. We are now co-ed employment, which is wonderful. So we have men and women firefighters at the station. In the current station, while we can accommodate both male and female, it is not ideal. There are better ways for a working environment for all those employees. So, the current, it is too small. Getting the vehicles in and out of that station, we have to special order some of the trucks in order that they can fit in due to the height of the ceilings on the first floor. Sleeping quarters, like I said, sleeping quarters are packed. We have two larger bunk rooms that each sleep about fourteen personnel, not that they're all on duty at the same time, but working overtime and other people that work, all those personnel, you could literally be sleeping within arm's reach, two-and-a-half feet away from another person. Became a very, very problematic during COVID. Hopefully, we never go through that again, but it was problematic at the time. Our turnout gear, our firefighting turnout gear, each, we, we have two sets of the turnout gear that you see that we wear into fires. Those are approximately thirty-five hundred dollars to four thousand dollars apiece. That equipment, when left out in the sunlight, breaks down. It has a shelf life unopened of ten years. You could leave it in its package, ten years later, that turnout gear needs to be replaced, even if it was never worn. The materials, the protective materials break down. Now, when we go into a burning building, the smoke, the atmospheres that we are going into are all toxic. All that smoke, all those chemicals are getting on our gear, they get trapped in the fires and they stay there. We then bring that equipment back to the fire station. We wash it, we have special washers to decontaminate it, but it never decontaminates it properly. So that gear will still off-gas some of the chemicals that we have just come out of, even though we've washed it. Current fire station, if you go into the station along the exterior walls, and some of the interior walls is where we keep all our turnout gear, that gear is off-gassing still into the atmosphere, the same atmosphere where your firefighters are working. They're eating, they're living, you know, it is a can, as it, firefighting has been labeled as an carcinogen within the past year. So, we are not doing our firefighters any service with the current station with our, our storage of our turnout gear. Our turnout gear is also kept right along the trucks. We have no stor, we have no better storage for our turnout gear. The diesel soot from the trucks, even though we have diesel capture systems to vent out that, that diesel, there's still some dirt and diesel that escapes that, gets embedded into the, into the firefighting gear, again, reducing its lifespan, reducing its protective qualities for the firefighters. Lack of room for training. Again, we are on a very small lot up on Union Street. We have a, no backyard, we have a very small front ramp. The front ramp or the driveway that we pull out onto isn't deep enough. We can't even bring our ladder truck out there to, to train, to practice. We have to bring it to another area of town to do that. Thank goodness, we have great businesses in town that will accommodate us and let us do that, but it takes us away from the station, takes us away out of our response districts. Again, you know, we can put ladders up against the fire station all day long, but it's still hard to train properly different techniques. Pulling hoses, flowing water, we have to go to other areas of town to do that when we could be doing it at the fire station. And parking. Parking at the current fire station, we can barely, we can barely fit current on-duty staff, never mind visitors, or if we're holding any type of training within the station, we have to park on the streets in front of the residential houses along Belmont, Pacific. We take up the, the business parking along Union Street. We just held a large training for many area departments, and some of the, the local businesses called over, asking if we could move because their patrons couldn't take, couldn't park for their businesses. Next slide, please. Here are some photos that we put together. Now, I've, I've heard on Facebook, I'm not a big Facebook watcher, and so if you are a Facebook person, please, I ask that you open your mind tonight and, and you listen to what is being shown. These are not fabricated photos. These are, this is how it is at the fire station. Our vehicles are parked. These are the gear lockers on this left-hand picture with the fire engine. Those are our gear lockers currently. That is how close. You have to shimmy between apparatus to get to, to your gear, to put it on for a, an emergency in, in the days. Now, this current truck is not in this location. This current truck has been moved, yet there is an ambulance in this location, just as wide, just as cumbersome to get around. If you notice, there's a locker there. This locker that you see here is one of the firefighters' lockers, actual lockers where they keep their spare, you know, uniforms and clothing, their toiletries that they, that they may need to, for showering. That's downstairs on the apparatus floor. That's, that's not up in the bathrooms, that's not up in the living quarters. Sorry if I keep getting in your way, folks. That, that is the, that is how we are living at, at the fire station. There is just no space, there, there's, there's no room, there is no storage. It is literally a vehicle parking garage. Right hand is the other set of lockers, and again, this, this here is down on the first floor towards the back of the station. And again, this stuff is all open to diesel, contamination, dirt, and those, those chemicals that are off-gassing from, from fires that we're bringing our gear back. So again, what we're trying to keep clean is getting dirty just by the nature of, of the profession and the storage requirements we have at the station. Next slide, please. This is our kitchen. You may not see it very well, but it's an incredible shade of nineteen seventies orange. That's just how old it is. We're firefighters. The, the color is A, we, we don't, it doesn't matter that our kitchen is orange, but that kitchen is about six feet by ten feet. That gets used to cook meals every day for seven personnel, six to seven firefighters. Lunch and dinner. The cabinets, the cabinets, you can see, it's hard to see, but the cabinets are chained. The cabinets are chained lock, each group has their own cabinets. The cost of cinnamon must be high because they keep all their spices locked up. It's just, it is, at, at the time that that station was built, it served its purpose. At this point, it is, it is long past its purpose for what the firefighter needs for their daily, um, living. I need to stress that the firefighters work twenty-four-hour shifts, eight in the morning to the next eight in the morning. So they are there for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. This is where they sleep. This is their house. This is their second home. So please also consider that, you know, that, that the living conditions. Try and place yourself as one of those firefighters when you want to work in this environment. Next slide, please. This is the back area of the fire station. This is after the chores get done at the station in the morning, after roll call is done, after they get their, their jobs for the day, their assignments, which engine, which ambulance they're on, what needs to get done for housework for the day. This is where the firefighters remain to be ready for calls. This is the back area. What you see there is the breakfast table, the lunch table, and quite often, the, the kitchen table. This is the, the main hangout area for the firefighters when they are waiting for calls and they're ready. They do training at this back table. They have meetings at this back table. And this is on the apparatus floor. You can't see the trucks, the trucks are all up towards where Mr. Lapp would be. And again, those diesel fumes, the fumes off of our gear, this, the, the normal dirt from the vehicles are in the air, and this is where they're eating. You can see the toaster. So they haven't, they haven't, you know, bagels and peanut butter with a little, little bit of diesel and carcinogens. It's not healthy for your firefighters. Another thing that this table serves at, this is where fire prevention, this is where the Deputy Chief Ahini, Fire Prevention, Lieutenant Charles Williams, Fire Prevention. This is where I have to meet with people that come in to do business and if they want to spread out plans. Our building is not ADA compliant. Sure, somebody in a wheelchair could come in through the front apparatus doors, but they cannot go upstairs to a sufficient meeting room, to a sufficient training room. This is our only accommodation for, for, for anybody with disabilities, if they were to come to our station with a meeting, we would have to sit there. Does this look professional to you, folks? I think the firefighters of Rockland, and I think the residents of Rockland deserve better. You know, we are a professional department, we have thirty-two professional personnel working at that station. I think it's time that we reflect it. Next slide, please. Here are the bunk room. Bunk room left, that's the Bat Cave. It's a pretty dark room, that's why it's called the Bat Cave, the, just the lights are on. The bunk room on the right, the picture on the right is nicknamed the Pine Street Inn. As you can see, this is where the firefighters are sleeping, men and women. We don't have partitions, we don't have separate sleeping areas for men and women. There are other stay, there are other bedrooms, there are three other bedrooms for senior personnel and for the lieutenants and captains, but they're just as cramped. There's three, four beds to a eight-by-ten room. Next slide, please. And as you know, this is the front, front of the station looking at it, just the cramped front ramp. This is with all the vehicles pulled out. The ladder truck, which is all the way up onto Union Street, is not pulled out fully. If we did pull it out fully, it would be completely be sticking onto Union Street. This is very difficult for us to train, if the trucks need to be worked on, and also, if you're walking down Union Street and you have to go by this, if we're out training or washing the trucks or servicing the trucks, you have to walk out into traffic to get by those trucks. Again, that's not safe for the, for the general public. We can do better. Next slide, please. So just some of the outreach we've done, we've had many public meetings, very similar to this, not much has changed in the slides. We've met with the Board of Selectmen a couple times. Mr. Lapp and I have done the TA Q and A, his little talk show he does, it's very informative. I urge you to, you know, watch this one again if, if, if you're unconvinced, watch the one on the Water Department with Crystal Cameron, very informative, very informative. And, you know, we, we've talked with the abutters, we have, we have support from most of the, the residents within that area that we've talked to. There may be some here tonight that we haven't, but we've reached out to them, we've, we've spoken with them, we've tried. Next slide, please. When we first started this, we had three sites we were looking at. We wanted a, a town-owned property, we did not want to have to take any land by eminent domain. We needed a site that was located within the center of town for our response. Fire Department operates much different than the Police Department. The Police Department has patrol sectors, they're out there, and they do an incredible job. The Fire Department, we are, we are located in one area, we are centralized, and we, we work outward. And then, the, the third was can the site properly fit a modern fire station? And that was the criteria. And I won't go through it all, because it's, it's been online. The, the red is bad, yellow is, 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 is okay, and the green is good. Our current fire station, site's too small, will not fit, we, we can't go, we, you know, we really, we can't build up, we can't build out, we, we are, we are, we are on a, a tight island up there. We also looked at the McKinley School, the current community center. Again, yes, it's, it's a big site, we could fit, we could fit a fire station there, but the big problem with that is, is that current building is on the historic register landmarks. And there are also other community programs there and departments that we would have to displace if we were to build a new fire station, and where would they go? And again, that's going to be a problem in a couple of years as well. And then the third site that we looked at was the ninety-nine Church Street. The ninety-nine Church Street site, it was town-owned, it was located in the center of town, and it was big enough to fit a, a, a modern fire station. Not perfectly, but, but well enough. And also, we weren't displacing any current programs. That is how we chose the site, that is how the site, the site became what we are looking for tonight. Next slide, please. And as you can see, that's the current site now, at the corner of Church and Howard Streets. These are just some very conceptual drawings that the architect, Schwartz and Silver, out of Boston, have done for us. They have been an incredible firm to work with. They brought in a fire station expert, name is Robert Mitchell, out of upstate New York. This architect has won awards yearly for fire station design through the expert, the, the, the expert magazines and the different firms that, that rate fire stations. So it's been a very well-thought-out, very well-planned-out need for today's fire station, for, in today's Fire Department, but also for tomorrow's and tomorrow's and tomorrow's and tomorrow's Fire Department. We tried to have some forethought in building a station that's going to last this town, hopefully a hundred years. That's a big ask for you tonight, is to help us look forward, just not for today. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. One of the things that within the fire station that we incorporate are hot zones, warm zones, and cold zones. Hot zones being where the contamination is. These are all hazardous materials terms. A hot zone would be where the fire trucks are, our gear would be. Anything that could possibly a contaminant or dirty would be in the red zones. The yellow zones would be a transition point where you wouldn't be able to bypass, where you wouldn't have to, you know, take dirty air or bad air into the clean areas. And then the blue, it's blue here, but it's green, is the living areas, the business space, the meeting rooms. This is where the firefighters, you know, would train, you know, their training that they don't need hands-on, they're non-hand-on training. Meeting spaces, admin offices. Next slide, please. Living quarters up front. There's also going to be admin offices up there, kitchen room, dining room, day room. Again, firefighters are working 24 hours a day, so there would be sleeping quarters up in that area. And again, that would be in the green area. It would be keeping your firefighters safe, keeping them healthy. That's the big important part here, is keeping them healthy and keeping carcinogens away from them. This is a pretty simple markup of what it may look like, a rendering of what a fire station at that site could look like. Keeping it tucked back off the street a little bit and tree lining, playing with different colors and different building heights and elevations in order to break up the total massing. Being friendly neighbors, that's what the firefighters want. We want to be friendly neighbors. We want to bring that feel of that city fire station down to that neighborhood. You know, we want to be, we want to be part of that neighborhood. Next slide, please. So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Lapp, who's just going to go over the numbers, how we got to where they were, and what it means for you.
Thank you, chief. So as the chief mentioned, we're working with a very experienced architectural team, Schwartz &amp; Silver. They've worked on fire stations all over the state. They've also hired a subcontractor that's a professional independent cost estimator. And they've reviewed bid prices from actual bids in our region for similar types of public facilities. And unfortunately, because our community has waited so many years to try to tackle this project, construction costs currently for public projects are at least $800 a square foot. This is probably double what it was maybe five years ago. So it's a recurring theme. The longer we wait, the more expensive these projects get. I won't read every line. You can see the grand total of 33.2 million, which is a grand total number, including construction, design, contingency, furniture, fixtures, equipment, everything, 33.2 million. We understand it's a large number. As far as financing goes, we're very fortunate that the town, over many years, has made a lot of sound decisions to get our financial house in order. We've maintained our strong bond rating. It's a double A, stable bond rating. And that was even through COVID, when we had to temporarily dip into our reserve funds to be able to keep our operations going. We subsequently then repaid all of our reserve funds back. So over many years, town meeting, selectmen, finance committee has all worked very hard to maintain our stable bond rating. So that's very important for projects like this. One thing I want to highlight is that unlike school projects with the MSBA or library construction projects with the state board of library commissioners, there currently is no similar type of state building program for public safety buildings. We've had a number of public meetings, as the chief talked about earlier, and this question was asked, well, there's a bill pending in the state house. Why don't we just wait for that to be passed into law next year and then we'll be able to access that? So just to state the obvious, not every bill that's proposed turns into law. This type of bill has been proposed for many, many, many years, and the state legislature has never found a recurring funding stream to be able to fund a public safety building project. So obviously, if there was a program like this out there, we would certainly take advantage of it, just like we did with the Phelps Elementary School project. Unfortunately, the program currently doesn't exist. And again, the longer we wait, the more expensive this project will become. We've always said from the very beginning, to the extent there are any state grants, we'll always apply for them. So as an example, just recently, the chief and the deputy chief found out about a $1.2 million federal FEMA grant, which we have applied for, which if this project gets approved at town meeting and if we're awarded that grant, the total cost to taxpayers would be reduced by that $1.2 million amount if we were successful in getting it. And we will obviously continue to look at any other grant opportunities available. But again, there's no big state program like there is, again, most recently with the Phelps School, where the state covered almost half the project. So what we're proposing is a debt exclusion. And I won't read all these words. You can take a look at it. But I just want to explain generally the difference between a debt exclusion and an operational override. If you're hiring more staff and need to raise taxes to be able to pay for it, for example, if we were going to build a second fire station, keep our current one and build a second one, that's a question that's been asked. We'd have to hire a whole new shift of firefighters to be able to staff that. That's a recurring, permanent expense that never goes away. That would be an operational override. Once you vote it, your taxes go up forever for that. What we're, we're not asking to hire any new staff. We're only looking at securing funding to build this capital project. So it's a vote at the ballot and it's a vote at town meeting, as I explained earlier. Taxes go up during the life of the bond, meaning during the period of time that we're paying the debt. And then once the debt is fully paid off, that tax increase goes away. Now, I understand it's what we're proposing, because it's a large project, has a very long term. So what we would recommend doing, if this were successful, would be a 30-year bond. So I understand that 30 years is a long time, but just to be clear, when the life of that bond is fully paid off, that tax increase goes away. That's what a debt exclusion is. Now, the next slide I want to show, and I want to preface it by saying that, and I'm not sure if there's any questions, but we'll hold the questions for the end. I want to show some statistics, some facts about our current property tax burden. And I want to just preface it by saying, I'm not trying to minimize in any way the burden that people feel, especially today with relatively high inflation that we have, that it's difficult to pay property taxes. We truly do understand that. But we've heard some feedback about comments made about things like our taxes are higher than our neighboring towns, things like that. So I wanted to show a chart that shows the current average single-family tax bill. So I want to be clear about what I'm saying. Tax bill means the bill you get in the mail from the tax collector that you go pay at the tax collector's office. Not the tax rate, but the actual bill, $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 a year, something like that. So if you look at the blue and white hash on the right, you see Rockland, where our average single-family tax bill is $6,802. The average for all the towns in Plymouth County, you see the green hash on the left is $7,294. And of course, that is skewed because you have a few very wealthy, high-tax towns like Norwell, Duxbury, and Hingham. But if you look at the median, right, where median is where half are above and half are below, the median is $6,821. So I just wanted to be clear again, I'm not trying to minimize the impact and the burden that a tax increase would have on any of you. But we are currently below the average in Plymouth County. We're below the median in Plymouth County. We're also below the average statewide. So I just wanted to clear that fact up. Here's the big slide. This is the one that I think you're all probably most concerned about and curious about, which is what is the tax impact on you if we were to approve this project? So before I go into the chart and the dollars, I want to just talk about the assumptions because those are important. The first is, again, we're budgeting based off a $33.2 million project. We're assuming that our bond rating will be maintained at a double A, stable. And I say that because anytime the town has to go out for a very large borrowing, we'll get, they call it a ratings call, where standard empliers will come in and update our bond rating. So we're assuming we'll be able to keep that double A, stable rating. We're also assuming 4% to 5% interest rate on a 30-year note. 4% to 5% is higher, for example, than what it was just a few years ago before COVID. Again, the school project, we were very fortunate because there was a great state grant program with the MSBA that covers about half the cost, and interest rates were very low. Unfortunately, with this, times of, as we've gone forward, construction costs are higher, interest rates are higher. For this exercise, we're also assuming level debt payments, kind of like a home mortgage, where you had a fixed interest rate on your mortgage, you have a level mortgage. We're assuming level debt service payments. And then most importantly, the current value of an average single-family home in Rockland is nearly $447,000. So what that means is all the numbers up above are based on a home valued at $446,925. So if your house is valued higher than that, your impact, your cost, will be greater. If your house is valued at less than that, it will be lower than the numbers up above. But again, this is the average. So if you look at the chart, the top row, you can see it says annual. The first couple of years, the upcoming fiscal year, FY '24, there's barely any cost. We're just working on, with the architects, to finalize some of the design. Then you can see in FY '25 and '26, where construction begins, you can see that tax increase goes up. And then the bulk of this 30-year period, from FY '27 to FY '53, the average tax increase per year for the average single-family home is $329, which you can see the quarterly, monthly numbers. I've been asked by the selectmen to talk about it on a daily basis, so $329 is obviously less than a dollar a day. I've been also asked to talk a little bit about our debt. What's our current debt burden? When is our debt going to fall off? What will it look like? The large, so the Y-axis, the vertical axis on the left, is our annual debt service. Debt service is the debt payments we make on the bonds for money that we've previously borrowed. Those numbers are in thousands. So if you see 7,000, that's really 7 million. On the bottom, the X-axis, the horizontal axis, those are fiscal years. The dark shaded area is our current debt service. So you can see it's a little below $7 million. And you can see that it's declining. I talked earlier how, when we modeled this, just as an example, we modeled level debt payments. Previous debt that we've done has had declining debt payments. So, and there's different trains of thought about which is sort of better. Generally, declining debt will have lower interest over the entire term of the note. But as you can see, there's much greater costs up front before they decline, whereas level debt service is literally would be a flat horizontal line, so it's a little bit easier to budget, a little less painful up front over the life of the note, there is a little bit more interest. So you can see how our debt is declining. This red dashed line, if you draw it over from where we are today, in about 10 years, I should have started, I'm sorry, by saying the dark shaded area is our current debt, the lighter shaded area above is the proposed fire station debt. So you can see, if you follow that red dashed line over to the right, where it intersects and you follow it down to 2033, in about 10 years, if this project were to pass, while there would be, you know, a significant tax increase for those 10 years, in about 10 years, we'd be at the exact same place you're at now. Meaning, some debt has fallen off the books while the new debt is on, and in about 10 years, you're right at where you're at now. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear as far as our current debt load, what's falling off, and what new debt would look like. If this is approved at town meeting tonight by at least a two-thirds majority, and if the board of selectmen later calls for a special election and there's a ballot vote, and if that ballot vote is successful by a simple majority vote, the next steps would be for the town to hire an owner's project manager, excuse me, owner's project manager. That's something required in state law. That's an independent entity that represents the town. They don't represent the contractor. They don't represent the architect. They just represent the town to make sure the project stays on time and on budget. We'd also hire the architect to finalize their design, create the construction documents. We'd go out to bid, and then we'd select the winning bidder, the lowest bid from a qualified firm, and the construction would be overseen by the project manager and the architect. This is the exact same process we went through with the Phelps Elementary School, and it's generally known as the design, bid, build process. As far as the timeline goes, you see the town election, town meeting dates. Again, if this project does not pass by a two-thirds majority tonight, then this proposal, as it's currently envisioned, would be dead, and we'd have to start over. If it passes tonight by at least two-thirds, again, there'd have to be a special election, could be sometime maybe in the late spring. The only rule from state law is that the successful ballot vote for this project to move forward would have to occur no later than September 15th. So if this passes tonight, the board would have until September 15th to call for that special election. And again, you can follow the dates down, assuming this special election were held in late spring. You see construction starting in the fall or winter of 2024, and the fire station could be complete around the summer or fall of 2026. So what your vote means tonight, a yes vote, would approve the project, again, pending a successful ballot vote, and a no vote would not approve the project. We've also been asked a number of times at several different settings, well, if this were to happen, if we were to build a new fire station, what would you do with the old station? So again, I have, I want to preface this, that, you know, no decisions would be made unless and until it passes tonight and out of ballot. There's a lot of ideas about what could happen with this building. For example, some of the library trustees have asked about whether that site could be available to the library for them to expand. So there's, no decisions have been made. I'll just give you my personal opinion, only speaking for myself as the town administrator. My recommendation would be to the board of selectmen to put an article on a future town meeting warrant, to request approval from town meeting to sell this building. And then we'd follow the state law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30B. We'd put out a request for proposals. We would frame it, whatever our preferences would be for the type of development. But ideally, it could be some kind of private development, whether it be a restaurant or whatever, that would put it back on the tax rolls. And whatever proceeds we get, whatever income we get from the sale of the building, let's say it's a million dollars, I'm just making that up, I have no idea what the value is. If it was a million dollars, that million dollars could be put into a sinking fund and directly offset the cost of the new project. So for example, if we get this FEMA grant for a million dollars, and if we were to get a million dollars from selling this building, the $33 million project just went down to $31 million. But again, no decisions have been made on this. There's nothing in this town meeting warrant article addressing this point. This is something that would only be discussed and addressed later if this project were to move forward. And then this is the last slide, what happens if this project fails? So the main point the chief and I would like to just remind everyone of is that if this project does not pass tonight, the need for a new station doesn't go away. And even worse, the cost for building a new station is going to continue to increase and increase a lot more than it has in the past. It's at least 5% a year for the foreseeable future right now. So what will probably happen is, next year at the annual town meeting, the chief will come back with another request for funding for the current station, some type of repairs or improvements. In my personal opinion, that's not a good investment. We're putting, we would be putting good money after bad because the main issue there is the site is simply too small. So that concludes our presentation. Before we turn it over to the moderator for discussion, I do want to highlight that we have one of our architects here from Schwartz &amp; Silver, Kelsey Sky Laser. She's been involved in this project from the beginning, so if there's any technical questions that you might need answered by an architect, we do have her available. I thank you for your time.[1736.01][1736.01](APPLAUSE)
Okay, I'm sure there are questions or comments, so raise your hand and you can come down and speak. My goodness. Oh, I see a hand. Just please state your name and address, sir.
Dean Mini, 35, Winter Circle. Chief, does this in any way, the relocation around the corner and down the street, does this in any way impact property and casualty insurance rates as far as your ability to respond in a certain time?
Mr. Mini, thank you. No, it does not. Part of this project is, we did bring in a consultant, another consultant out of upstate New York on, he's an expert on fire department responses, on response times, station locations. He reviewed our town. He reviewed where- He reviewed our town, he reviewed where our calls were throughout town, and his conclusions is that the current station, or the church, a new station at 99 Church Street would not affect the responses, or they could be considered the same response time throughout the town.
David Bain, 8 Northfield Drive in Rockland. My question and my comments is, I know we need a fire station, I've seen your fire station, and I come from riding the back step. And like you, I fought fire in my own community, and I've actually intubated, you know, classmates, grandparents in 1978. So I'm not too sure what your department was in 1978, so I get. My concern is, it's going to outprice me. I mean, it's a beautiful place, a lot of bells and whistles. You know, I'd rather see more firefighters in this building, I'd rather see Lucas on the ambulance. I'd rather see, if you're going to put in a fire station, they need to be an E-light down at the Union Street, because you're never going to get that ladder company up there and stop it and out that hill. It'd be nice if you could just move it a little better. My concern is that this is going to outlast me. And between, the water department wanted to go up, it didn't even say how much they wanted to go up, they just said bill was going to go up. I just, I know we need a fire station, I agree with you, it's just a lot of money. And like, and I come from.
I saw a man over here first, and then I'll take. Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir.
Sean Feigen, 59, South Douglas Street. I second what that gentleman said. I feel like the project's going to be way too much. My father lives in the town in Norfolk. Their proposal for a new station is 25 million. It seems like you guys want the Cadillac of stations, but what's so wrong about having the Toyota Corolla of stations? Something that we can afford that will work.
Do you want an answer to that question, sir?
Thank you, those are great, both point. Both of those points are great, and I'm sure there's going to be similar of those. We are not looking for a Taj Mahal, we are not looking for a Cadillac. What we are looking for is for a fire station that is going to last 800 years, hopefully. We are looking for a fire station that has enough office space, that has enough bunk space, that will accommodate a fire station that the town of Rockland will need in 30, 40, 50 years. That is where our current station has fallen short. The current station was built at the time, and it was built very well and thought out. It was probably never thought that that station would be there in 2020, 2025, housing a larger department, more personnel, larger trucks. More of a mission. Firefighters have gone from being just firefighters, going out a few hundred times a year, putting out fires, to an all hazards, fire prevention. We now have three, two fire prevention officers, plus myself. We have advanced life support equipment. We are now running two ambulances with a third backup, with Lucas devices, with paramedics. That's where currently, right now, bells and whistles is what we have on the trucks. The equipment we have, the training we get, the trucks, the new truck that we have ordered, those are where the bells and whistles are. And those have come through grants, grants that your firefighters have gone out and gotten. Firefighter Mark Asher, who I know they run on a call, I don't know, he was going to be here tonight as a guest, he has gone out and he has gotten, I think, close to $5 to $7 million in the last 15 years for the fire department, on his own, at no cost, he's not a grant writer. It's a passion he has. So that's where our bells and whistles are. This station that we are looking for, by no means, you know, we're not looking for grand entryways, we're not looking for, you know, special tiles or anything like that. We want a simple station that's going to house the fire department as, you know, the needs for the future, for today and for the future. So I believe that we are not at the Cadillac, I believe we are down at a lower model. Thank you.
To further answer this gentleman's question, the town administrator wanted to answer you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to make two other points to that. I obviously agree with everything the chief said, but two other quick points. One is, you know, take a different number, say we were to cut things back sort of arbitrarily to get a slightly smaller number. If the average tax increase of $329 is really just unaffordable for folks, if we cut the project back, I'm just making this up, to $305 a year, would that really make a difference materially in your income, in your pocketbook, in your vote tonight? One of the biggest lessons we learned from talking to other communities, including my own experience, in the last community I worked in where we went through this process, but in many other communities, the biggest mistakes the towns make in looking to do a new project like this is to come up with an artificial arbitrary number and build to that number. Because most often what happens when you do that and construct it, is it's immediately out of date the day you build it. There's not enough storage, it isn't sufficient, and then communities shortly thereafter have to look at supplementing and putting on additions, and then taxpayers get very frustrated, and understandably so, they voted it, but yet we kind of nickel and dimed it, and it couldn't last. So I just wanted to give you that other perspective, but I appreciate the question.
This lady in red.
Mary Donovan, Franklin Hunt Road. I think a lot of things have been addressed already. My comment was, or what I was thinking, and I think a lot of people here are, is, we do absolutely need a new fire station, but I think a lot of people are definitely watching their pennies nowadays, and we're not sure how, much more expensive, it's going to get to live. Chief Duffy, you're talking about, you feel this station is not the Cadillac. I guess when I looked at the renderings, I saw differently, but I am not in the firefighting business. Is there a possibility, because if I looked at the information correctly, the station we currently have is about 13,000 square feet, and I'm not sure of that number, and this one is going to be 33,000 square feet. So you're right, we don't want to nickel and dime, because then we're going to start chasing, you know, it's not going to be adequate, but is there somewhere in the middle that can, you know, take care of the town for the next 50 to 100 years? I mean, I'm not sure you can plan that far. I also believe in, you know, doing maintenance and renovations, because if you build a beautiful building and do nothing, then eventually you're going to need another one. But I'd like to see a new fire station, and I also believe that we all want to watch our monies, because we want to be able to have life. So is there something we can do without kicking this can down the road another year or two, and the cost continuing to go up?
What I could say is that when we sat down with the fire station, Robert Mitchell, he was a fire station design expert, when we sat down with him, we went over room by room, the needs of the station. Apparatus, storage for medical equipment, storage for the firefighting equipment, for hoses, for ladders, you know, everything was broken down by a square foot room, kind of created into little bubbles that got moved around. Office spaces, training rooms, public meeting rooms. And that was what came out to meet our current needs, was that 33,000 square feet. You know, firefighters are resilient, you know, can we always make do? I believe we can, I don't know, I don't have that direct answer for you. I would just hate to see us build a fire station now that is going to be too small in 10, 15, 20 years.
Man in the corner against the wall.
Hey, good evening. Brandon Binsfield, I'm at 61 Warren. For a living, I'm a building engineer in HVAC tech. I run a building right now, a high-rise for Newmark. Before that, I came from a One Kendall Square in Cambridge, it's over a million square feet of lab space, all changed over from buildings built 18, 1900s. For 33,000 square feet, I can't imagine it being $33 million. And maybe the architect can help us with this, and help me with the cost, because I've overseen lab buildings getting built from office buildings. Everything's got to go, air handlers, makeup units, electrical, generators, everything from scratch. Doesn't cost $33 million. And I could be wrong, maybe there's extra stuff? Are we using the same equipment? All the same trucks and ladders, everything's the same? I don't understand where storage will grow in 100 years, and I don't understand the need for that big of a cost increase, personally doing it for a living. I just think you're shooting for the moon. So, thank you.
Thank you for the question. Two things, one is, I'm not sure if, in your personal, professional work that you described, if you're doing public construction or private construction, you mentioned private labs, but this is obviously a public project, and so we're subject to the state's public construction law. One of the largest driving cost factors that increases costs for public construction projects that doesn't affect private projects is the state's prevailing wage law. So what that means is, when the town goes out to bid to hire a company to build any public project, a school, it could be roadwork, a building, we have to pay very high, union-scale wages, regardless of whether that company actually has a union shop or not, it's the prevailing wage law. And that is a significant increase to labor, which is a significant portion of any construction project. So that's one point, let me just think of another one before I forget. The second one is, the $800 a square foot isn't just an estimate, it's based on actual low-bid prices for similar projects recently in the region. So it's, they're not just, they're not just estimates, they're based on actual hard data for publicly bid construction projects. So I just wanted to make that clear.
All right, thank you for that.
Gentleman in the red shirt.
David Saucy, 111 Basin Ave. Couple things. Your chart for taxes, I don't know where everybody else lives, but I got a three-quarter acre corn lot, and I'm nine grand a year. So, we got a middle school, we got 20 years left on paying, the new elementary school, I don't even think it's hit our tax bill yet. I got nothing against the fire department, but Rockland, tell me if I'm wrong, is a blue collar town. People don't have the money. You know, this stuff should have been thought about years ago. 20 years ago, when they built the police station, it could have been a combination police-fire station, the fire department didn't want it. The moderator was the chief then. So, we can't afford this. If anybody can, let me know. I can't. 62 years old, I want to retire, and I'm going to work till I drop dead to pay my taxes.
Just to clarify something, yeah, he's right, I was the fire chief back then. However, the state paid for the Rockland Police Station, $2.5 million. It were three, they built three police stations in the state, and we had a great town administrator at the time, the name of Kevin Donovan, and he found out that two towns were putting out bids for, and they were trying to take, that two of the stations were going out to bid, and the state legislature was trying to take the $2.5 million from Rockland. And that's how the Rockland Police Station got built by a state grant for $2.5 million in that year.
It would have been cheaper 20 years ago.
What's that?
It would have been cheaper 20 years ago to build it, even if we had to pay for it all out of pocket.
Well, we won't get into that.
Kevin, can I make a point? Can I say something?
Go ahead. Thank you, I appreciate the comments. I think similarly, if we don't do this for 20 years, 20 years from now, people are going to be looking back saying, why didn't we do it now when it was cheaper than it would be in the future? The other, only other point I wanted to make, this is just factual, the Phelps Elementary School, the new school that we built, that tax increase is already in your taxes fully. The previous speaker said it was not, that's incorrect, it is already reflected in your taxes fully. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm going to give this, somebody in the back corner. I'm going to take this gentleman first. Be nice now.
My name is Paul Ryan, I live at 337 Webster Street. I recently watched a video by the chief, he said, I believe they said they had 4,000 ambulance calls a year, is that correct?
We have 4,000 total calls, we have approximately, oh, 4,100 total calls, approximately 3,700 ambulance calls.
Okay, and how many of those actually go to the hospital?
Out of those 37, I believe it's 32,000, not 3,200.
Back in January, I was taking my ambulance to South Shore Hospital, I got a bill for $2,200. Now if you do the math, where is that money going? Why can't that money be used to finance a new station, rather than out of our pockets?
Yeah.
And that's like five or six million bucks, right? Four minute, what? You said, how many go to the hospital?
About 32.
Okay, times 2,200.
So let me, let me speak.
So that's about, what, six million a year? I'm sure that would pay for a nice station. That's all I can say.
Yep.
Thanks for saving my life, by the way.
Sir, I'm glad that you're here to vote one way or another, I really am. That's a great, that's an excellent point, and that is a point that I would love, I would love to be able to take those ambulance receipts and use them for the Rockland Fire Department. That would be, that would be a wonderful thing, I would love that. But unfortunately, the ambulance receipts go back to the town, they go back into the general fund, and they get used for the whole town. Now, yes, they do come back in a roundabout way, through salaries and our regular budget into the department, but what I have to say is that of those ambulance runs, while our bills are set at $1,700, $2,200, depending upon the level of service that's provided, many of our residents are on Medicare, and that's a set rate. So that $2,200 really is $450, $560 that Medicare will pay. So then the town has to abate the rest of those funds. So even though we build that, that's not what gets collected for over half of our patients. So we annually, I believe last year, FY '22, we brought in 1.4 million in ambulance revenue. Just to clarify and give you some numbers.
This person to my left, lady.
Carrie Zinkata, Webster Street, Rockland. I could not find anywhere in the United States a new firehouse that costs $33.2 million. As the gentleman mentioned, Norfolk's is 26 million this year. I could not find anywhere that it costs $800 square feet in the United States to build a new firehouse. I don't know where these figures are coming from, but I think that we need to go back to the table and figure out why Norfolk can do it cheaper, why other towns can do it cheaper in the United States, and why it looks like 800 per square feet isn't the cost. My other question is, that I haven't heard anything about, the sewer bills are going up supposedly, the water bill is going up, we have necessities that are not functioning, and we want a luxury item. Let's get the basics first. But the question I have to the chief is, you haven't discussed the mechanics bay that is... that is included in this plan. And as I understand it, the mechanics bay is for where your trucks will be operated on or fixed, right? Who's going to do that? Are we now going to have to hire a mechanic? And the town's going to have to pay for a full-time mechanic? And then, are the firefighters and their friends and families going to get free auto service? And is that going to take...
Ma'am?
And is that going to take profit away from our local, our local businesses doing auto services? So I'd like to know what is going on with this mechanics bay? And who's going to furnish it with all of its toys that it'll need to operate?
So the questions on the mechanics bay is a great question. Thank you. I appreciate it. The mechanics bay was a thought to put in into a new facility. We could have a space where a town mechanic, yes, we would need to hire a town mechanic. Would need, could be employed to fix fire department vehicles, police department, water, school, highways, park vehicles, heavy-duty mechanics to work on our vehicles. Currently, at this time, when we send a truck out for repair to a diesel mechanic, or we bring a diesel mechanic in, it's costing the town $150 an hour. If we had a mechanic making $150 an hour, that's $300,000 a year. I don't believe that we'd be paying that in a mechanic. So first, we'd be reducing our hourly rate of work on our vehicles from the 150 to whatever a mechanic would make. Maybe 50. I don't know what that number is. Obviously, as part of the costs in this construction is cost to furnish some of that equipment into the building. Being lifts, heavy-duty lifts for the larger trucks. These trucks, that mechanics bay would fit our ladder truck. I'd be able to fit our ladder truck in there with the cab tilted forward so that they could properly work on it and then lift it. So, yes, we are trying to forward-think and to bring a mechanic into town that would eventually save some money for the departments that are currently paying private contractors to perform. For the other comments and questions? No. We don't use town property or equipment for our own personal use. Ethically, we are not allowed to. And it doesn't happen.
I have a motion to move the question in a second. All those in favor of moving the question signify with a show of hands. All those opposed to moving the question? You have voted to move the question. What that means is, we're going to cut off debate. Now, the original motion was to borrow $33,200,000. We need a two-thirds vote. I'm going to try and see what happens on the first vote. All those in favor of the motion to spend that money to build a new fire station, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? You have voted not to build a new fire station or to borrow the money. Just hold that thought for one second. Hold that thought. Okay, that's what we did. We voted not to borrow the money to build the fire station. Now, I heard something else.
Make a motion not to reconsider Article 84.
Do I have a second? Okay. And what I wanted to confer with Town Council is, is that the previous, the motion we passed earlier, we didn't, we could do it with a majority because it was not an article such as this. So, in order to do the, not to reconsider, we're going to need a two-thirds vote. We could try for unanimous, but if not, then we'll do a count. All those in favor of reconsidering Article 84? Not to reconsider? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All those in favor? Not to reconsider? I'm sorry. No, John, I'm correct.
The proper motion for the body would be a vote to reconsider the article. Presumably, the majority of the audience will vote no on that. It would require a two-thirds vote yes to reconsider the article.
I know, it's, it's difficult. The motion has, the motion, I think with this gentleman is going, is he does not want, he doesn't want to reconsider the article. Okay. But in order to do that, you have to ask to reconsider it. Then we need to get a two-thirds vote. Not, basically, you don't reconsider it. Okay? I know, it's... I'm correct, right, John?
So again, the proper motion...
Excuse me?
The proper motion for the body would be a vote to reconsider the article. If you are against reconsidering this article and you wish to foreclose any more discussion of it at this town meeting, you would vote no in response to that.
Okay, so what I need is a motion to reconsider. Motion to reconsider in a second. Okay. Well, I'm going to try for unanimous because I have a feeling that's where it's going. If we don't, we're going to count. All those in favor of reconsidering the article, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, signify with a show of hands. You have voted unanimous to not to reconsider the article. It's done. Okay. Article number one. Article number one. Will the town vote to cast votes in the next annual town election for the election of candidates for the following officers? And the only correction is, it should be two seats for the school committee. This election will take place on Saturday, April 13, 2024, submitted by the town clerk and approved by the Board of Selectmen. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number two. Will the town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elective officers in the town in the amounts indicated in the department budgets and make such salaries and compensation effective July 1, 2023, fiscal year 2024, in accordance with the provisions of the Mass General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended, and to raise and appropriate such sums of money for the ensuing year, and that all sums be appropriated for the specific purpose designated, and that the same be expended on such, for such boards and commissions of the town as voted, or take any other action relative thereto. Board of Selectmen submitted it. The Finance Committee approved it. Funding source will be the FY '24 budget. All those in favor of adopting Article 2 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Now, we come to Article 3, the budget. Mr. Lapp, did you want to, you want to speak on this? And before we go any further?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And I promise members of Town Meeting, I will be much more brief than I was with the fire station project. So thank you all for being here tonight. Regarding the town budget and all the financial articles, I want to thank our entire finance team, the town treasurer, assessor, tax collector, assistant town administrator, and especially our new town accountant, Scott Curtis, sitting to my left. All right. You got applause. As recommended by the State Department of Revenue, we've continued using conservative budgeting principles. Not overestimating our revenues nor underestimating our expenses, which has helped us to continue to maintain our positive financial position and our strong bond rating. Rest assured, the Finance Committee has reviewed and approved literally every single number in the budget and all of the individual capital articles included in the warrant. Furthermore, there's a strong consensus among all the various boards and committees in town to recommend all of the financial articles in the warrant. The proposed FY '24 budget before you tonight is responsible. It's balanced, and there are no uses of one-time funds for operating expenses. It maintains our current level of services, and it includes over $1.8 million increase to the school department operating budget. More specifically, the proposed FY '24 budget accomplishes the following objectives for the general government departments. It implements all of our collective bargaining increases that we've negotiated with the unions, which is generally 2% to 2.5% wage increases per year. Non-salaries, excuse me, non-union salaries are generally kept to that same 2.5% increase. However, a few department head salaries were adjusted further for market corrections based on a detailed regional wage comparison. This budget also addresses the most urgent operating budget shortfalls in critical areas, such as our tree department, highway department, stormwater management, a new part-time veteran services van driver, McKinley Building maintenance, and professional development and training for staff and all boards and committees. Lastly, this budget increases funding to all of our reserve accounts, OPEB, the General Stabilization Fund, and our Capital Stabilization Fund. And this is very important in helping us maintain the bond rating that I've spoken about so frequently tonight. So with that, I want to thank you for coming to Town Meeting. I'd also like to thank the school department, which is by far our largest department in town, for the extremely positive relationship that we've continued to maintain with them during the past year. Our communication and collaboration with the school department remains very strong. Lastly, I'd like to thank the Capital Planning Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Board of Selectmen, all of our department heads, and Town Council for their support, input, and guidance through this budget process. And I'd especially like to thank the Finance Committee as our budget season this year was compressed into a shorter timeframe due to the delay with the new governor's administration having an extra month to submit their proposed budget and their initial state aid numbers. As a result, the Volunteer Finance Committee had to meet multiple nights in the same week for over a month this year. And I greatly appreciate their commitment. We're all on the same page and united to help Rockland continue to move forward. Thank you.
All right. Article number three. I will read it, and then I'll look to see if anyone has questions or concerns about a budget. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds as indicated such sums of money necessary for the ensuing year in the general fund operating budget or take any other action relative thereto? Does anyone have any... Mary Parsons, I believe it is.
I'm going to make this really quick. Capital question. Mary Parsons, 754 Union Street. On page 19, under Personnel, it says dues, meetings, and training session goes from $1,000 to $31,500? How does that happen? It goes from $1,000 to $31,000? I mean, what kind of training are we talking about?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Mary. I'm going to ask, I'm going to give a very brief intro, but I'm going to ask our HR Director, Stacy Callahan, if she's here to come on down to the front. I think I see Stacy now. Stacy, we're just about to talk about the professional development training in the HR budget. So while she's coming, Mary, I'll just generally say this. We're a, you know, $70 million enterprise. What was our initial? $1,000 a year is essentially nothing in an organization our size.
I know, but $31,500 is a little bit more than that. You're making a jump from $1,000 to $31,500.
Mary, could I finish?
That's all I want to ask is, what is, how does that happen?
Thank you, Mary. So, it happens by us putting a proposal together, and we present it to the Board of Selectmen, and we present it to the Finance Committee, and then ultimately, we talk about it at Town Meeting, and voters at Town Meeting voted. So that's procedurally how it happens. The reason why we're recommending this increase is, over time, we've been trying to greatly professionalize our organization. And I think everybody here in this room, I imagine, works and works for some company or some other organization. Professional development is very important. And there's different components to it. It could be for some individuals getting more specific technical training in their area. Or in our organization, where we're very decentralized with lots of independent elected, appointed boards and committees, we're subject to all kinds of laws, whether it's the open meeting law, state ethics law. There's sexual harassment training, all kinds of things. If you think about issues the town has had in the past, we're trying to professionalize and greatly increase training and development across the entire organization from every junior employee all the way up through the elected Board of Selectmen, Finance Committees, and others. With that, I'm going to ask our HR Director to talk just a little bit more about what she envisions we could do with this increase in the operating budget.
Hi, Stacy Callahan. I'm the HR Director. So, yes, Mary, this, I'm not sure where you are, but this is a much bigger budget than it was last year. But we are, like the town administrator said, really trying to grow the HR department and the professional development for all of our town employees. You know, I've been working here for a little over 12 years, and I came from the corporate side of HR and mutual funds. And there's always an extensive training budget because we certainly want our employees to be able to be giving, you know, the best customer service, the effective communication skills, being able to de-escalate irate situations or, you know, handle things internally with employees or for professional development reasons. You know, we have employees that have never had the opportunity to cross-train or learn something else in the town, in another department, that they might have interest in. So we've talked a lot about building a training program over the last several years, and actually, probably the last six or seven years. And this has finally been the first opportunity that we've been able to have the money in the budget, build the department, get the support of the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. So, like Town Administrator Lapp said, we are really trying to build it from our junior clerks right up to the management level. You know, we have, I've already started looking into what programs we're going to be doing. Also, one thing I did want, I do want to mention about this is that $1,000 or $1,500 that the HR department had for dues, meetings last year is included in that budget. So, for myself and a part-timer, all of the certifications, classes, and dues, meetings that we attend are included in that training budget as well. So we don't have a separate line item just for us. And but the remainder of it will be for the employees from top right up to management level, as well as boards and committees. Like Doug said, we're going to be doing for new members. We want to make sure they are familiar with the open meeting law and what they need to do as members and what their responsibilities are. So it will be for throughout the entire town. And I mean, you know, for many of you that might work for corporations, this is a drop in the hat for the 70-plus million-dollar budget in order to train your employees. I mean, you know, I try not to go on Facebook that much either. But when I do, you know, I'm HR. I hear complaints. I hear things that come through, good and bad. And we want to make sure all of our staff is able to handle any type of situation that comes their way. And they really haven't had a lot of training since I've been there. It's been pretty basic along the way. So we really want to try to ramp that up and become as professional as we possibly can. Not that they aren't now, we have excellent employees that work for us. But there are always situations that everybody can prove on. And we want to make sure that we are providing them the resources that they deserve.
Does anybody else have any questions on this budget? Seeing no other questions, we'll vote on the Personnel Budget. Amount of $164,917.85. Amount of $164,917.85. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Now, on the rest of the budget, does anybody have any questions about a budget? Seeing none? I don't think. Where are you?
I'm not sure if it's on the --
You're going to have to come down to the microphone. I'm sorry. Come right up to the microphone.
I'm not sure if it was part of the budget, Judy Fields, on Smith Road in Rockland.
Ma'am, would you first state your name and address, please?
Yeah, Judy Fields, Smith Road in Rockland.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if it was in the budget, but I know when I was reading through, there were many areas talking about a sick time buyouts. Is that part of the discussion, or is that somewhere else?
No, that's in another article.
Okay, well, I don't know if you can answer my question. I know a lot of, you know, companies, most, over the inflationary years and cutting costs, most companies have cut down on giving sick time and on buying it. I don't know what the policy is, how many sick days people get, when they turn them in at the end, is it, do they pay for 20%, 50%, 100%? I don't know what's in the meaning of saying that, because there's no information about it.
Well, when we get, ma'am, when we get to that, I'll look for you. If you stay on the end of an aisle, I'll look for you.
Well...
Okay, I will do that. Is there anything else that anybody wants to bring up on the budget? If not, I'm going to...
Jeff Najarian, 22 Bradford Street. I need a shorter mic. I have a quick question. First, congratulations to Chief Zioli, new our new police chief, but I noticed on the budget that the salary went from $160,000 to $140,000, which is unusual and maybe good, but why a pay cut?
So, I'm happy to speak about that, and I also want to congratulate Chief Zioli. We are very fortunate to have been able to hire our new chief internally and have someone of the quality of the chief. Former Chief Llewellyn was here a long time, so he was chief for a lot longer. Chief Zioli is new. Also, former Chief Llewellyn had a law degree, so there was additional compensation associated with his law degree that Chief Zioli doesn't have. But there is an individual employment agreement between the chief and the Board of Selectmen, and rest assured, both parties are satisfied that it's fair compensation and the chief is okay. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions. The total budget, Article Three, $76,796,876.93. All those in favor of adopting Article Three is printed, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Four, will the town vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $106,018 for the purpose of contractual buyout or no retirement, vacation, and a sick leave buyout, and other non-salary payments or take any other action relative thereto, requested by the Board of Selectmen, approved by the Finance Committee to come from free cash? And I have a, where did my, the lady go?
Do you want to answer the question?
I understand the question, Mr. Moderator. So, a couple of things. One is, there's state law which we have to comply with, so certain things we're required to pay when people do leave. Secondly, we have union agreements with, you know, five different collective bargaining agreements, so much of what you see is what's included in the collective bargaining agreements. As Attorney Clifford and I were just discussing, we've actually negotiated, successfully negotiated out of the union agreements, much of the higher-cost items, meaning employees can only, it's capped at how much they're able to get upon retirement. And then lastly, we have personnel policies adopted by the Board of Selectmen, which govern non-union employees, which mirrors that similar best practice. And then there's a handful of employees, like the public safety chiefs, that have individual employment agreements, but again, we try to mirror the same pattern. So, it's a system that's in place, again, which, you know, complies with state law. We've negotiated out much of the higher-cost items, but capped at a certain amount of unused sick time, and all vacation time is obligated to be paid out upon retirement. Thank you.
I tried to answer it, I'm sorry. Well, I understand vacation time, but what is the town ruling for their workers? Well, they're like, someone gets it low, people taking sick days, everyone cuts down. Everyone is given, you know, what they have, and they, yeah, how much they have to pay in, maybe 20%. Do they pay 100% a day, how many days do they get a year, how much do they roll over? And certainly, I'm not trying to keep anything secret, yeah.
There were some very expensive sick buyout provisions in the union contracts and in personnel contracts. We've negotiated successfully with the union to grandfather a lot of those out, but a lot of the more senior employees kept those benefits. But going back, beginning in 2008, we started negotiating them down to a much more reasonable level. But really, what you're seeing is more senior employees that kept the benefits that they negotiated earlier in their careers, but we've done, we've made a lot of progress to cut back on these costs.
Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of Article Number Four signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Five, will the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $150,000 to the Open Trust Fund, which stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, or take any other action relative thereto? Board of Selectmen requested it, approved by the Finance Committee, and it's going to be through raise and appropriate.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Bill Minahan, 5 Chris Roy Drive, past Finance member, past Finance Chair, past Selectmen. I would like to address an issue of great importance to all of us, the burden of high taxes and inflation that our community is facing. The impact of these recent tax overrides of less, many of us residents struggling to make ends meet. Therefore, we must prioritize finding ways to lower taxes and alleviate the financial burden on our community. The proposals before us today for Articles Five, Six, and Seven seeks to transfer a total of $450,000 into savings accounts. While it's essential to have a savings account for emergencies, we must also recognize that our residents need relief from high taxes and inflation right now. Instead of investing into savings accounts, we should prioritize finding ways to lower taxes and reduce the financial burden our community, on our community. One way to reduce the financial burden is by aggressively paying down debt rather than saving money. The interest on our debt service is a whopping $2.5 million. Saving money when you have enormous amounts of debt is like wearing a raincoat in the shower. It might protect you for a little bit of, little bit of the rain, but you're still going to get soaked in the end. It's like trying to make a snowman in the Sahara Desert or trying to teach a cat to bark. It just doesn't make sense. When we're in debt, it's like we're carrying a backpack full of rocks up Steep Mountain. The more debt we have, the heavier the backpack gets, and the harder it becomes to climb to the top. Saving money while in debt is like adding more rocks to the backpack. It might feel like we're making progress by putting something aside, but in reality, it's just making the climb even more difficult. Instead of adding more weight to the backpack, we should focus on unloading the rocks one by one and paying off our debt as quick as possible. So, I propose we forget about saving money for now, and let's focus on getting out of debt, because as the old adage goes, a penny saved is a penny earned, but a dollar paid toward debt is a dollar we don't owe anymore. So I propose that we amend Articles Five, Six, and Seven, five for right now, as follows: Will the town vote to transfer the sum of $150,000 to account number 710, principal on maturing debt, or take any other action relative thereto? In conclusion, I urge you to support the amendment to Article Five and prioritize the, in finding, prioritize finding ways to lower taxes and reduce the financial burden on our community. Thank you.
Okay, on Article Five, on Article Five, did I lose my mic? There we go. On Article Five, I have an amendment that states, will the town vote to transfer the sum of $150,000 to account 710, principal on maturing debt, or take any other action relative thereto? Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Moderator?
Hold on. I'm sorry. I have a motion and a second. Yes, sir.
I believe the amendment is beyond the scope of the article. The budget for capital for debt payments has already been voted on in the last article. This article is to either move money into those savings account or not, but moving it to a totally different account, especially one that's already voted, that's not within the scope of the posted article.
So, from Town Council, he states that this is basically not a legal amendment?
That's correct.
Mr. Moderator, may I comment as well?
You may.
Thank you. I'm not going to challenge Attorney Clifford's legal opinion, but I would like to speak to Mr. Minahan's comments, if I may. You threw a lot of metaphors in there, and I'm not going to try to match those. We had snowmen in the desert and rocks in the shower with a raincoat, I'm not sure. So, I'm not going to try to best you on that, but I appreciate the question. That's certainly something we did talk about with the Finance Committee. It's interesting, because these three articles, this article and the two after it, are something that I'm actually incredibly proud of in this article, because not only are we putting funds in our rainy day accounts, but we're not funding it from free cash, we're actually funding it from raise and appropriate, funding that within our levy. So, I am proud of that. My quickest answer to you is, I get the logic, I understand your point, but putting money in these rainy day accounts is incredibly important, and this is part of why we've got our bond rating to the level it is. And every bond rating call I've ever been on, and I've been on them for 17 years, never once has Standard and Poor's or any other rating agency ever said, "Have you prepaid any debt?" They don't care about that. What they want to know is, "How much money is in your reserves? What is your policy for increasing funding into OPEB?" And as an example, our current OPEB liability, our other post-employment benefit liability, is over $100 million. We only currently have a little over $1 million in there. So, $150,000 is not a significant individual amount, but it's something if we keep doing year after year, again, when we go to the rating agencies, those are the indicators they want to see. And if we don't do that, if we don't put money into our reserves, and instead, we prepaid a little bit of debt, which you're not even going to notice, to be frank, in your tax bill, we're going to get a higher interest rate on our bonds, and it's going to cost you more money in interest the next time we borrow. So I would urge Town Meeting to continue to fund this article, as well as the next two articles, put funding into our reserves. It's what the Department of Revenue recommends, and it's what Standard and Poor's and other rating agencies that rate towns like Rockland recommend as well. Thank you.
At this point, according to Town Council, the, this is not a legal amendment, so therefore, we're still going to take what the Article Five, will the town raise, vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $150,000 to the Open Trust Fund or take any other action relative thereto? All those in favor of adopting Article Five signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Six, will the town vote to transfer the sum of $150,000 to the General Stabilization Fund or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Board of Selectmen, approved by the Finance Committee. The amendment I received makes the same statement, to put it into account that we've already voted on. Therefore, the amendment is ruled illegal. All those in favor of adopting Article Six, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Seven, will the town vote to transfer the sum of $150,000 to the Capital Stabilization Fund or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Board of Selectmen, approved by the Finance Committee, raise and appropriate. And the same thing, my same answer to Article Seven, is submitted, the amendment is, it's, according to Town Council, it's illegal. All those in favor of adopting Article Seven signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Eight, will the town vote to amend Town Code Division Two, General Bylaws, Part One, Administrative Legislation, Chapter 38.6, Department Revolving Funds, by adding the following authorized revolving funds: Police and cemetery, to do with the Mount Pleasant Cemetery that will be coming up later in the meeting. Requested by the Board of Selectmen, approval recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and the funding source is the service fees related to each fund. All those in favor of adopting Article Eight signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Nine, will the town vote to amend the Rockland Town Code, I'm sorry, will the town vote to authorize or reauthorize revolving funds for fiscal year 2024 pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, as amended for the following purposes, authorized to expel the amounts shown below or take any other action relative thereto? On Page 43, you have all the revolving accounts requested by the town accountant, approved by the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, and the funding source, again, is the service fees that are collected by all of these groups to pay their bills. All those in favor of adopting Article Nine signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Ten, will the town vote to raise and appropriate, borrow and or transfer from available funds in the Treasury $3,883,496.76 to be expended under the direction of the Abington and Rockland Joint Water Works Board of Water Commissioners for the purpose of funding the Enterprise Fund budget for the Water Department effective fiscal year 2024, with $3,728,958 for the Water Department operating budget, and an additional $154,532.76 to be transferred to the General Fund operating budget for indirect expenses as shown below or take any other action relative thereto? This is the Water Department budget. It was requested by the Abington and Rockland Joint Board of Water Commissioners, approval recommended by the Finance Committee, funding source is water revenue. All those in favor of adopting Article Ten signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Eleven, will the town vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds in the Treasury $3,460,712 to be expended under the direction of the Rockland Board of Sewer Commissioners for the purpose of funding the Enterprise Fund budget for the Sewer Department effective fiscal year 2024, with $3,401,020 for the Sewer Department operating budget, and an additional $59,692 to be transferred to the General Fund operating budget for indirect expenses as shown below or take any other action relative thereto? On Page 45 is the Sewer Department budget, and their indirect budget, requested by the Sewer Commissioners, recommended by the Finance Committee, money to come from sewer revenues. All those in favor of adopting Article Eleven signify with a show of hands. All those opposed?
Question.
John Born, 63 Forest Street, Rockland. I got a question about the, both the water bill and the sewer bill. It goes up, but you have to buy your own water and everything. What's going on? It's got to be fixed. That's all I got to say.
First of all, we're on the Sewer Department budget.
Mr. Moderator, may I make one comment?
Sure.
For, just generally, sir, I appreciate your question. For both water and sewer, later in the Town Meeting warrant, there's a lot of articles with all kinds of improvements that the Water Department and the Sewer Department are requesting to help improve the quality of the service they deliver. So you'll see many of those articles coming up. Thank you.
Any other questions on Article Eleven? All?
David Bain, Northfield Drive, Rockland. I understand, did they change the parts per million code for the water quality? That's why they, we got dinged for it?
So we're on the sewer budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. I get confused. I come from a county system.
Any other questions on Article 11 on the Sewer Department? All those in favor of adopting Article 11 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 12, this is going to require a two-thirds majority vote. I will try and get a unanimous. Will the town vote effective fiscal year 2024, starting July 1, 2023, to establish an opioid settlement special purpose stabilization fund in accordance with Mass. General Law 40, Section 5B, and further authorize a deposit of all opioid settlement funds into the newly established fund or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Board of Selectmen, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source opioid settlement funds. This is going to require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of adopting Article 12 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article 13, will the town vote to transfer the sum of $22,263.84 to the Opioids Settlement Special Purpose Stabilization Fund or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Selectmen, approved by the Finance Committee, and funding source is free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 13 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 14, will the town vote to appropriate a reserve from the Community Preservation Fund annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2024, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation as follows? Appropriations and the reserves are listed in front of you. This was requested by the Community Preservation, and the Finance Committee deferred to the Community Preservation Committee, and I believe this is Steve O'Donnell. Just state your address, too, Steve.
Yeah, Steve O'Donnell, 71 Winding Way. Motion to vote on the article as written.
Do I have a second? All those in favor of adopting Article 14 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 15.
Mr. Moderator, on Article 15, I'd like to take a motion to indefinitely postpone.
I have a motion to indefinitely postpone and a second. Just so, Mr. Lapp, do you want to give a 10-second?
I'll keep it brief. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Included in your warrant was an article to acquire some land on Carey Street. The current owner had approached the town. The Parks Commissioners and the Community Preservation Committee were very interested in acquiring this land, because it abuts other land owned by the Parks Department. So they were looking at potentially building out a park or ball fields. Unfortunately, since that time, the owner has pulled back his offer, and he's no longer willing to sell it to the town. So the offer's off the table, and that's why we need to pass it over tonight. Thank you.
I had a motion and a second to pass over the article. All those in favor? All those, any opposed? That's a vote. Article 16, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $75,000 to fund town capital projects or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Town Administrator, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 16 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 17, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $300,000 to fund the purchase and installation of a permanent generator at Town Hall or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Town Administrator, the ID Director, and Emergency Management Director. Approval recommended by the Finance Committee, and the funding source is free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 17 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 18, this is going to require a two-thirds majority. I'd like to try for a unanimous. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $70,000 to fund the purchase of two electric vehicles for Town Hall and special departments or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Town Administrator, approved by the Finance Committee. The funding source is the Marijuana Host Community Agreement Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. I need a two-thirds majority. All those are unanimous. Hello? You have a question? Come on down.
Stephen Tows, 241 North Avenue.
You got to speak up a little bit, sir.
Stephen Tows, 241 North Avenue. My question is, are these two new vehicles? Are they replacing already existing vehicles?
Sure, thank you for the-
I'll ask the Town Administrator to answer that question, sir.
Thank you for your question, sir. Yes, they are new vehicles. The reason for that is, these are, would be replacing vehicles where employees are using their personal vehicles. So we have a variety of town departments where individuals are using their personal vehicles for the official town business. We have to pay mileage and other compensation for that, and we've been urged, and I stress urged, by our insurance company to discontinue this practice, to reduce our liability. So they're new vehicles.
So this would not be, this would not be for just one department? It would be shared by the entire town?
Correct.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'd like a unanimous. All those in favor of adopting Article 18 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article 19, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $35,000 to fund celebrations for the town of Rockland's 150th anniversary or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Board of Selectmen, approval by the Finance Committee, and taken from free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 19 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 20, another two-thirds. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $70,000 to purchase a new fire department administrative vehicle or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Fire Department, approval by the Finance Committee, funding source is the Marijuana Host Community Agreement Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. I need a two-thirds vote. Are unanimous. All those in favor of adopting Article number 20 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article 21, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $35,000 to fund fire department non-fire emergency response gear or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Fire Department, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source is free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 21 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 22, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $175,000 for a grant match to purchase a new fire engine or take any other action relative thereto? I believe this is the second year of a five-year purchase. Mr. Lapp?
I'm looking for the fire chief here. He's coming down. It's going to be, it's a match for a new engine, but I'll let the chief explain it more.
Mr. Moderator, this is a, for a new engine, this is an AFG grant that was obtained by the Rockland firefighters. So this is the 5% match, plus gap for the cost of the new engine.
Requested by the Fire Department, approved, recommended by the Finance Committee. Again, the funding source is the Marijuana Host Community Agreement Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. I need a two-thirds. I'd love a unanimous. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article 23, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $25,000 to purchase new fire department CPR devices or take any other action relative thereto? From the Fire Department, approved by the Finance Committee, the same funding source, Marijuana Host Community Agreement Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. I need a two-thirds or a unanimous. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article 24, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $225,000 to purchase a new loader for the Highway Department or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Highway Department, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source the Marijuana Host Community Agreement Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. Two-thirds I need are unanimous. All those in favor of adopting Article 24 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article 25, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $65,000 to purchase a new F-350 or equivalent pickup truck for the Highway Department or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Highway Superintendent, recommended by the Finance Committee, the funding source the Marijuana Host Community Agreement Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. I need a two-thirds. You are unanimous. All those in favor of adopting Article 25 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Unanimous. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds $129,000 to purchase a new F-650 or equivalent dump truck for the Highway Department or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Highway Superintendent, approved by the Finance Committee, same funding source, the Marijuana Stabilization Fund. I need a, two-thirds are unanimous. All those in favor of adopting Article 26 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article 27, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $110,000 to fund drainage repairs in the vicinity of Pond Street or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Highway Superintendent, approved by the Finance Committee, and coming from free cash. All those in favor of Article number 27 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 28, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $80,000 to purchase new snow and ice equipment or take any other action relative thereto? Submitted by the Highway Superintendent, approved by the Finance Committee, funding from free cash. All those in favor of Article 28 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 29, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $85,000 to repave Weymouth Street or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Highway Superintendent, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source Marijuana Host Community Agreement Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. It's needed a two-thirds vote or a unanimous. All those in favor of Article 29 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article 30, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $120,000 for curb and sidewalk upgrades at Plain Street and Goddard Avenue or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Highway Superintendent, approved by the Finance Committee, to come from free cash. All those in favor of Article number 30 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 31, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $200,000 for curb and sidewalk upgrades at Beach Street or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Highway Superintendent, approved by the Finance Committee, and coming from free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 31 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 32, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $25,000 to complete a professional classification, compensation, and grading plan for general government employees or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Human Resources Director, approved by the Finance Committee, coming from free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 32 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 33, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $93,000 to replace the scoreboard at the Veterans Memorial Stadium or take any other action relative thereto? Submitted by the Park Commissioners, approval recommended by the Finance Committee, the funding source is free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 33 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 34, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $90,000 to purchase a new mower or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Park Commissioners, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source from free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 34 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 35, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $119,100 to replace the rooftop HVAC unit at the police station or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the police chief, recommended by the Finance Committee, to come from free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 35 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 36, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $97,725 to replace the flat rubber membrane roof on the police station or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the police chief, approval recommended by the Finance Committee, to come from free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 36 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 37, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $119,904 to purchase two new police vehicles or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the police chief, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source Marijuana Host Community Agreement Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. It needs a two-thirds. I hope a unanimous will go. All those in favor of adopting Article 37 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $18,000 to purchase security cameras at Hartz IV Park or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Recreation Director, approved by the Finance, and coming from free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 38 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 39, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $14,000 to purchase new furniture and equipment at the community center, take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Recreation Director, approved by the Finance Committee, from free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 39 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 40, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $75,000 for lease, van lease payments or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the School Committee, recommended by the Finance Committee, from free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 40 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 41, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $100,000 for information technology purchases or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the School Department, approved by the Finance Committee, from free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 41 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 42, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $150,000 for school security technology upgrades or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the School Committee, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 42 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 43, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $140,000 for building improvements at the Eastern School or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the School Committee, approved by the Finance Committee, from free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 43 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 44, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds $200,000 for the purchase and installation of a new playground at the Eastern School or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the School Committee, approved by the Finance Committee, from free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 44 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 45, there is no money in this, but they want to enter into a five-year, eventually enter into a five-year lease purchase, so we have to do a two-thirds, hopefully a majority. Will the town vote to allow the Rockland Public Library to enter into a five-year lease purchase agreement for a printer-copier with the cost to be funded through the Library Department operating budget or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Library Director, approved by the Finance, and it will come from the library budget. All those in favor of adopting Article 45 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Now, Articles, excuse me. Articles 46 through 60, these 15 articles, I'm not going to, I'm going to read the articles, but I'm not, they've all been requested by the Abington and Rockland Joint Board of Water Commissioners. They have all been approved by the Finance Committee, and the funding source is water undesignated fund balance and/or water enterprise fund retained earnings. So here we go. Will the town vote to authorize the Water Commissioners to take from water undesignated fund balance a sum of $35,000- fund balance a sum of $35,000 for sick time buyback or take any other action relative there too? All those in favor of adopting Article 46 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 47. Town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from the water undesignated fund balance a sum of $30,000 for cross connections or take any other action relative there too? All those in favor of Article 47 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 48. Will the town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from the water undesignated fund balance a sum of $25,000 for R450 water meter replacements or take any other action relative there too? All those in favor of adopting Article 48 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 49. Will the town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from the water undesignated fund a sum of $60,000 for security and safety upgrades and plant maintenance or take any other action relative there too? All those in favor of adopting Article 49 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 50. Will the town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from water undesignated fund balance a sum of $20,000 for information technology or computer upgrades or take any other action relative there too? All those in favor of adopting Article 50 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 51. Will the town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from the water undesignated fund balance a sum of $15,000 for paving and road repairs or take any other action relative there too? All those in favor of adopting Article 51 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Will the town vote, 52. Will the town vote to transfer the water commissioners reserve fund a sum of $100,000 from the water undesignated fund balance to take any other action there too? All those in favor of adopting Article 52 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 53. Will the town vote to authorize water commissioners to take from the water undesignated fund balance a sum of $50,000 for ECO tube removal or take any other action relative there too? All those in favor of adopting Article 53 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 54. Will the town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from water undesignated fund balance a sum of $50,000 for GAC filter media replacement or take any other action relative there too? All those in favor of adopting Article 54 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 55. Town vote to authorize water commissioners to take from water undesignated fund balance a sum of $60,000 for gravity filter replacement and/or rehabilitation or take any other action relative there too? All those in favor of adopting Article 55 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 56. Will the town vote to authorize water commissioners to take from water undesignated fund balance a sum of $20,000 for hydrant replacements or take any other action relative there too? All those in favor of adopting Article 56 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 57. Will the town vote to authorize water commissioners to take from water undesignated fund balance a sum of $150,000 for residual management program or take any other action relative there too? All those in favor of adopting Article 57 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 58. Will the town vote to authorize water commissioners to take from undesignated fund balance a sum of $100,000 for treatment, infrastructure upgrades or take any other action relative there too? All those in favor of Article 58 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 59. Will the town vote to authorize water commissioners to take from the water undesignated fund balance a sum of $50,000 for the water meter replacement program or take any other action relative there too? All those in favor of adopting Article 59 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 60. Will the town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from undesignated fund balance a sum of $75,000 for pump and/or filter upgrades or take any other action relative there too? All those in favor of adopting Article 60 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 61. Will the town vote to amend the Rockland Town Code, Division 2, General Bylaws, Part 2, General Legislation, Chapter 378 by replacing 378-3. Violations and penalties shown as shown below and by adding 378-14 as shown below. Violations and penalties. Any person who have violated this bylaw will receive a written warning. By the way, this was put in by the Abington and Rockland Joint Board of Water Commissioners. Any person who have violated these sections of the bylaw will receive a written warning for the first offense and shall be liable to the town in the amount of $100 for each subsequent offense within the same calendar year. Any person found to have violated Section 378-12 of this bylaw shall be liable to the town in the amount of $300 for each offense. Any person found to have violated 378.13 of this bylaw shall be liable to the town up to $300 for each offense. Fines shall be levied and assessed by employees of the water department and authorized agents of the Board of Water Commissioners upon witnessing any violations or after investigating and verifying that a violation in fact occurred. Violators shall be entitled to appeal the assessment of fines with the Board of Water Commissioners, and said appeal should be held at a public meeting of the Board. Fines shall be recovered by indictment or by, on complaint before the district court and/or noncriminal disposition in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 21D. Each day on which the violation of 378-8 and 378-9 occurred shall constitute a separate offense. Then they want to add a new section, invalid, invalid, the invalidity, any portion of this provision of this bylaw shall not invalidate any other portion of the provision thereof or take any other action relative there too. It was approved by the Board of Selectmen of the Finance Committee, there is no funding I think I have some questions.
Mary Parsons, 754 Union Street. This came up at water commission meetings recently from an Abington water commissioner who thought it was not fair that the town of Rockland did not find the residents for using outdoor use of the water and one of the restrictions, and Abington never rescinded their water penalties for their restrictions. I am the person that rescinded the penalties when this first came up in, back in the early 2000s, and I rescinded it for a reason, because back then, the town of Rockland gave water and sewer to the Blue Cross Blue Shield building that was built in Hingham off of Commerce Road. Okay? We were on water restrictions, but the Blue Cross Blue Shield building built in Hingham was not, because we could not give water restrictions to a building in the town of Hingham. So what I did is I came to town meeting back in 2003, and I rescinded the penalties. I am going to read to you, because I want to make this very quick, and I'm asking you to vote no on this article. I am going to read to you a letter that was written to one of my neighbors in, recently. It said, "The Rockland Water Department would like to inform you that your account 003605, located at 821 Union Street, is in Arias." This is a neighbor of mine. She mailed this to me. "The department therefore wishes to inform you that if your past due balance is not paid in full as of November 28, 2022, a lien will be attached to your property plus a $10 leaning charge. The amount of the unpaid charges plus the leaning charge will be deducted from your tax payment resulting in a tax payment deficit. The amount, total amount due to the Rockland Water Department for FY 2021 is as follows: Water: $0.57. Service: zero. Service: zero. Interest: zero. Total due: $0.57. My neighbor, okay? It says, "Please make cash payment. Bank checks or money orders payable to the Rockland Water Department. Payments can be dropped off to the tax collector's drop box at the Rockland Town Hall or mailed to P.O. Box 548, Rockland, Mass. Payments made after the payment deadline will be applied to FY 2023 billing. Please return a copy of this letter with your payment. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please call the Rockland Water Department." Well, my neighbor broke out her piggy bank and counted out 57 pennies, and she went up to town hall, and she paid it in full, and she made them right, paid in full on here. I do not see any of my neighbors ever abusing water outside. You can drive around and take a look at the lawns. We don't abuse our water, and I would ask you to not vote for this article. Please pass it. Vote no.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Clifford.
I think it's, it's, it's important for voters to understand that the current water bylaw simply says, "Any person failing to comply with this bylaw shall be punished of a fine not exceeding $300." That was voted by the town meeting in 2008. So the current bylaw means that you could be fined $300 for a first-time water, van violation, anything else. This bylaw was drafted to mirror exactly what they have in Abington. It also gives anybody who's issued a fine under the existing water bylaw the right to appeal, which also is not included in the current bylaw. So the bylaw as drafted, as proposed for town meeting lowers some of the potential fines, and it gives residents an avenue for appeal. Thank you.
Ma'am?
I'm Crystal Cameron. I'm the superintendent for the water department. In addition to the violations page portion that were rescinded from that, from that portion of the bylaw, was also the violations portion that we have control on whether or not if a person was to tamper with a meter. So if that happens, say, I don't know, Debbie took her meter out. I have no control on fining her for doing that. That's a huge problem. That's a big no-no with Mass. DEP, the state, in our industry. If this gentleman went out and turned the water on to a development, I have no way of fining him because of this rescinded part of the bylaw. No way of doing that. That's a huge problem. This needs to be addressed. I think we need to try to be a little bit more responsible when it comes to water. I get letters all the time with people complaining about their neighbors using water. The things that we're trying to address more are irrigation systems that are running just throughout the day during, you know, super, super hot days. I'm not talking about, you know, vegetable gardens wanting to be watered, or, you know, livestock that needs to be, you know, needs water, or even people washing their cars. There's times to do this during the year, and we are totally, we are mandated by the state to follow certain rules and regulations on when we enforce those time periods. This is, you know, the cents and dollars and all that stuff, I don't know what that really has to do with the bylaw. However, if the money's owed to the water department, she should just pay the money. I don't really, I mean, I know it's silly for the cents and things like that, but we used to have a secretary that would pay that money, but she was told she can't do that because she's actually acting as the collector, so we had no choice but to send those letters. So anyways, it's, it's important to be more responsible with the water, because I don't want to get into a situation where we don't have the water to provide for the town. I certainly hope none of you guys want to do that. We're just trying to be more responsible. We also have a permit that I have to abide by with the state. The state looks at me and says, "How are you regulating the consumption of water? How are you, how are you regulating how people are using the water outside?" If I can't do that in Rockland, and I can't reassure the state that we're doing it in a responsible way, I really don't have an answer to the state, and then eventually they're going to come and they're going to want to try to do it. I think that it's a good thing that the residents of Rockland might want to do it ourselves and do it in a responsible way. We're not going to, you know, drive around town being a Gestapo, trying to, you know, deal with people who are watering their vegetables. This is more about the irrigation, this is more about irresponsible lawn watering, which I think is, is foolish when we're in a time of drought. I hope that people agree with me. If not, I understand, but this, that's what this is more about. This isn't about anything else other than that.
Mr. Moderator, can I respond to that?
Anybody else, Mary, before? Right here. Mary, I'm going to let, okay.
Hi, Laurie Childs, 234 North Ave. Crystal, can you go into some of the consequences of, or the dangers of using water like that in a drought? Like, what are some of the consequences of that?
Sure. You know, we could be in a situation where we don't have water to, or adequate pressure to put out fires. I'm sure the chief doesn't want to hear that. I'm sure you as residents don't want to hear that. We had a pretty catastrophic break over at the Hannigan Water Treatment Plant in Rockland within the last few years where we had some pressure issues. It's similar to that. I, I don't want to ever get to that point, and at this point right now, I'm trying to seize the moment, because in my career of almost 20 years, I have never come out of the winter where we, you know, we count on the recharge from the snow. I have never come out of a winter being this low in the reservoirs at this point. I know the state's saying we're not in a drought, but that's not necessarily all, you know, our reservoirs depend on that. There should be benchmarks and things like that that we look at in the reservoirs to determine that. So while the state might look okay, our reservoirs do not, and I'm very concerned. My colleagues are very concerned. The commission is very concerned, which is why we're here and talking about this bylaw. I think, you know, when I'm getting letters, being called all sorts of names and wondering why I'm not going to X person's house and telling them to stop, you know, watering their lawn, I wish I could, but as of right now, I can't do anything but to ask politely and send them a letter and say, "Please stop watering your lawn during, you know, a heat wave." It's, we, you know, we can go and do this the right way, where it's, you know, we ask you to do it during certain times of the day where it's, you know, most beneficial and whatnot, but as of right now, I really, there's nothing I can do as far as the violations to enforce it, especially with the meter tampering and the water, the gate tampering and things like that. There's nothing I can do, and I just, and we, we come to this situation where in Abington we can do this, but in Rockland we cannot. So we have these beautiful homes over in Abington watering their grass and just, you know, going nuts and wasting all this water, and the commission wants to do something about it, but they rightfully so, don't feel right about doing it, because we can't do, we serve two towns, and what we can't do in one, they don't want to do in another. So it's, you know, they're up against a rock and a hard place, and I just think that responsibility is on all of us to do the right thing.
Good evening. I'll try not to use any metaphors, Doug. I promise. But I will read it, because it's pretty technical. I stand before you tonight to speak against Article 61. The article proposes to amend the Rockland Town Code, Division 2, General Bylaws, Part 2, with severe consequences for those who violate certain provisions. We all know that enforcing rules and regulations is essential for maintaining order and protecting public health and safety. However, it's equally crucial to ensure that these rules and regulations are reasonable and fair. Unfortunately, Article 61 fails to meet these standards. Article 61 as presented lacks due process, because it allows fines to be levied and assessed by employees of the water department and to authorized agents of the Board of Water Commissioners without, without proper judicial review. And what I mean by that is, under this article, the, these employees or agents have the power to investigate and verify a violation, and then assess a fine without independent, without any independent oversight or hearing. This means that someone can be fined without being given a chance to defend themselves, present evidence, or challenge the evidence presented against them. Furthermore, this appeal process provided by Article 61 is insufficient to ensure due process. The violator is only entitled to appeal the assessment of any fines with the Board of Water Commissioners, which is not an independent body. This means that the same people who assess the fine in the first place are the ones responsible for the hearing of the appeal, which could result in a lack of impartiality. I think due process is a fundamental principle in our legal system, that is, a fair treatment throughout the judicial system. It includes the right of a hearing, the right to prevent, present evidence, the right to an independent review, and the right to appeal Article 61, and the right to appeal. Article 61 does not provide adequate safeguards for these rights, and therefore it lacks due process. Finally, I'm deeply concerned about the provision in Section 378-14. Section 378- Section 378-14 of the article states, "The invalidity of any portion or provision of this bylaw shall not invalidate or other provisions, portion or provision thereof." While this may seem innocuous, it actually creates a significant problem. The provision commonly known as severability clause, I can't even say that, but severability clause essentially means that any part of the bylaw is found to be invalid, that portion can be struck down, but not, but the rest of the bylaw will remain intact. The problem with this clause is that it may allow unconstitutional or otherwise problematic provisions to remain in effect even if they are found to be invalid. This means that the Water Department could enforce provisions that violate the law or the town bylaws with no mechanism in place to remove them. This provision is particularly problematic in the context of Article 61 because it provides no safeguard against a potential violations of due process or other constitutional rights. If any provision of the bylaw violates due process, for example, the severability clause would allow the rest of the bylaw to remain in effect, potentially resulting in violations of the individual rights and any civil liberties. So, in conclusion, Article 61 is unjust, unreasonable, and lacks due process. It's crucial to enforce bylaws to promote public safety and order, but we need to do so in a fair and reasonable manner. I urge you to vote against this article. Thank you.[685.82][685.82](APPLAUSE).
Mrs. Parsons.
Yes. When I rescinded the dollar amount in the previous article, which was this, and it was also Mr. Menahan that talked me into leaving the article itself in, but take out the fines. And that's what we did. We didn't leave the fines in. I would know if that article appeared in the 2008 town meeting because I go to town meetings. And no, there are other towns from Pembroke down, the pipeline coming down and through Hanson, we can't tell them to put them on a water ban. That's the other problem. Besides the fact that the Abington Commissioner, no one got up at his town meeting to kill the fines. That's not our problem. That's his problem. The other problem I'm having with him is he has this tendency to maybe think about allowing, letting developers skip the $80,000 systems fee that has to be paid. But anybody coming in with a new development, when they put grass in, they get to use the water for that. They don't get fined for it. I'm just asking you to vote no because this does nothing but hurt us. We don't abuse our water system. And yes, the Water Department will go back to driving around, and the gas is going to cost more money than they'll get out of fines. Thank you.[768.73][768.73](APPLAUSE).
I have a motion to move the question. Do I have a second?
Second.
All, I need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the question signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we're going to vote on Article 61. It was approved by, it was approved by the Finance Committee. Therefore, that's the first action that's going to be taken. All those in favor of adopting Article 61 as written in your booklet signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? You voted not to adopt the article. Will the town vote to authorize the sewer commissioners to take from sewer undesignated fund balance a sum of $100,000 for repair or replacement of system pumps and injector stations or take any other action relative thereto? It was requested by the sewer commission, funded by the, recommended by the Finance Committee from the Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earning. All those in favor of adopting Article 62 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 63. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $62,153.32 to be expended under the direction of the Rockland Board of Sewer Commissioners for the purpose of funding sewer pump and injector station repairs and/or replacement and/or related items with $37,153.32 funded through a transfer of the unexpended balance from Article 40 of the May 3, 2021 Annual Town Meeting, and $25,000 from the sewer undesignated fund balance and take any other action relative thereto, submitted by the sewer commissioners, approved by the Finance Committee. All those in favor of adopting Article 63 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Okay, the next article is going to require a two-thirds vote. I'm going to read the motion. So moved that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $2,500,000 to be expended under the direction of the Rockland Board of Sewer Commissioners for the purpose of funding wastewater treatment improvements and upgrades pursuant to a mandate from the U.S. EPA, including all costs incidental related to and to meet the appropriation. $1 million is to be funded through general fund American Rescue Plan Act funding, and the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $1,500,000 pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, or any other enabling authority and issue bonds and notes of the town thereafter, that any such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town, but is the intention of the town that debt service first be paid from the Sewer Enterprise Fund receipts and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to contract for and expend any federal and state aid available for the project or take any other action necessary to carry out the project or take any other action relative Chair recognizes Chairman of the Sewer Commission Chuck Hesron.
Chuck Hesron, 110 Huggins Road. I second the motion, so moved.
(INAUDIBLE).
Oh, I second the motion, so moved.
Okay, I have the motion. I've read the motion, and I have a second. It was requested by the sewer commissioners, approval recommended by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen with the funding source sewer borrowing and federal American Rescue Plan Act funds. I'd like to have a unanimous, if I could. All those in favor of adopting Article 64 as read signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Article 65. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $667,200 to be expended under the direction of the Rockland Board of Sewer Commissioners for the purpose of funding wastewater treatment plant repairs with $127,200 funded through a transfer of the unexpended balance from Article 32 of the May 2, 2022 Annual Town Meeting, commingled with the additional sum of $515,000 funded through general fund American Rescue Plan Act funding, and $25,000 from the sewer undesignated fund balance or take any other action relative thereto, submitted by the sewer commissioners, recommended by the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen. All those in favor of adopting Article 65 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article number 66. Will the town vote to amend the so-called Town of Rockland Mass Sewer Use Ordinance adopted in 2008 and last revised by Article 33 of the May 2, 2011 Annual Town Meeting as follows? Changing the name of the Town of Rockland Sewer Use Ordinance to the Sewer Use Bylaw of the Rockland Sewer Department, authorizing the town clerk to insert the same after the approval of the same in Rockland Town Code in Division 2, General Bylaws, Part 2. General legislation is Chapter 390 Sewer Use, and further by deleting the word ordinance each time it appears and inserting in place thereof, and further, the town clerk be authorized to make clerical editorial and/or adjustments related to incorporating the new Sewer Use Bylaw into the town code. And two, amending Section 2, General Use Requirements. Section 2.4, New Sewers and Sewer Connections, by deleting the sentence stating the fee is currently $10 per gallon per day of any new discharge and leaving the remainder of this subsection or take any other action relative thereto, requested by the sewer commissioners, approved by the Board of Selectmen, there is no funding source required. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of Article 66 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 67. Will the town vote to establish a sewer stabilization fund under Mass General Law's Chapter 40, Section 5C, effective for the fiscal year 2024, beginning on July 1, 2023? Take any other action relative thereto, requested by the sewer commissioners, approved by the Finance Committee, and the funding source would be from sewer enterprise fund receipts. All those in favor of adopting Article 67 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 68. This is, 68 and 69 are quite lengthy. Basically, will the town vote to revoke the exception of civil service laws for the uniform members of the Police Department of the Town of Rockland? And Article 69, will the town vote to revoke the exception of civil service laws for the Town of Rockland uniform members of the Fire Department for all ranks? Both chiefs want asked to speak on this article tonight together, so I'm going to ask them to come up and give an explanation. Me reading this is not going to mean a lot. Chief Ziole and Chief Duffy. The microphone is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Nick Ziole, Police Chief. So, I know there's a lot on the agenda still left tonight, so I'll try to make this brief. But together with Chief Duffy, I'd like to speak in favor of these two articles as they're proposed, and also discuss some of the benefits and how they'll make things better for our department and our community. The purpose of these articles is to remove our Police Department and Fire Departments from the provisions of civil service. And just for background purposes, civil service is a state agency that governs initial hiring, promotions, and appeals for discipline. But a lot has changed since civil service was first established in 1884. And some of the things that have changed is today, we have comprehensive policies and collective bargaining agreements that afford protections to employees. Also, our town has human resources departments that further ensures protections to employees of the town. Now, the Police Department and the Fire Service have encountered some considerable challenges by being involved in civil service, and some of those things include lack of applicants. We recently hired several officers, and we were given a list of 28 names from civil service, and we only had 10 people come in to sign. And quickly, that list dwindled down to six before we even did our initial vetting. So, I think the Fire Chief will also concur that the number of people going into first responding professions, police and fire, is on the wane. And that's nothing unique to Rockland. I mean, that's typical of what I've been talking to other communities. So, we're trying to do something better here, something to make our candidate pool a little bit more broader. Civil service, it's typically slow, and the process is lengthy. Exam results can take up to five months to get those results. And civil service really doesn't address some of the community needs, and it's kind of a one-size-fits-all system. By leaving civil service and creating a community-based system, each department will have town and union-approved policies and procedures to cover hiring and promotions. We sit down with all our unions to get input and feedback from the unions discussing our policies, and that'll continue as we move forward. Hiring will now be specific to the needs of the Police and the Fire Department, and we feel a community-based system will generate a broader pool of candidates is what we're looking for. We will have the ability to increase entrance and promotional standards currently. Currently, what we have is, all you need is a high school or GED and a Massachusetts license to apply. By moving out of civil service, we can increase those standards if we choose to do so. Shorter timeframes for hiring and promotions, and test results can be available in days as opposed to months. We will be free from the mandates of civil service, including reliance on layoff lists, and we'll allow the Police and Fire to hire personnel in a similar manner to other departments in town. Right now, the Police and the Fire are the only ones that are bound by civil service, so we would be able to hire people just like the School Department, Highway Department, just like that. The Fire Chief is here as well. He'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Chief. The Fire Department is very similar to the Police. All these same benefits and same problems. Chief Ziole covered those very well. Also, for the Police and Fire, the current employees of each department that were hired under the civil service system would retain their civil service rights and protections. Those wouldn't go away for those current employees, so God forbid there were any layoffs. Those employees would go on a layoff list through civil service, or if any of the employees were disciplined, they have, they still have their appeal rights through civil service. This would only affect new hires for the town. And other towns, we're not the only town currently looking to get out of civil service. It's an outdated, underfunded, understaffed Department of the State. Currently, there are 44 Police Departments and Fire Departments that are trying to get out of civil service. 17 pending legislative petitions are currently in the legislature, trying to get, departments trying to get out. The Town of Noel Police is in the process, as well as the Yarmouth Fire Department. And the unions, that's the big thing, is our personnel. Our personnel that are currently in the civil service support this, the current staff at the Fire and Police. And there are representatives from those unions here this evening that I believe do want to speak in favor of that. I don't want to speak for them, however, they are here. So, we ask that you please support these next two articles.
The chair recognizes Mr. Henderson.
Tom Henderson, 102 Arlington Street, president of the Rockland Firefighters. Just wanted to go on record that we mutually agreed to this in negotiations. It was ratified by the Rockland Firefighters, and we support both articles. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Gentlemen up here.
Brian Martin, 57 Vinton Terrace. My question is to the chiefs. Are we still going to have veterans' preference in the Town of Rockland?
Mr. Martin, thank you for that question. The veterans and the families of fallen firefighters and police officers will still be given high consideration through our policies and procedures, yes.
So, can I make an amendment to the motion to add that wordage into their?
I will refer that to town council.
That would not be within the scope of the article in the hiring process. If the town does vote to remove itself from civil service, statutorily falls within the domain of the Board of Selectmen, would be subject to collective bargaining with the unions.
Melissa Bergio, 18 Willa Pond Drive. My question is in regards to the civil service, you know, how they have the protections. If you do remove from civil service, how will they be protected, the new people, under your new proposed regulations?
Thank you for your question. So, all their protections will be afforded through their collective bargaining agreements. Employees will not be able to be disciplined unless it's just cause, so they would avail themselves to arbitrators under that manner. So, it would be through their collective bargaining agreements. Yep, they all have a contract, and in the contract, in their policies and procedures outlines discipline, outlines all their rights, and they would access those.
And how is it different between the civil service and the collective bargaining?
So, you would go see an arbitrator. Right now, employees have a choice when you go to arbitration or go to civil service. If they came out of civil service, you would be seeking an arbitrator who would make that decision.
Any other questions? Mr. Najarian.
Without a doubt, there's, it's, the civil service system is not the best system in the world, but that system does protect veterans and that they get veterans' preference when they apply for a job. That's really important. And I saw on the flyer that was distributed that you give a little leeway to veterans and family members of deceased firefighters and police. That's not veterans' preference. That's a civil thing that you can say yes or no real easy. That's what part of veterans' preference is in civil service. Basically, it also leaves the door open to nepotism, and it's tough enough in small towns, but by doing away And it's tough enough in small towns, but by doing away with civil service, it makes it that much easier. I recommend voting against this.
Mr. Moderator, over here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Lapp?
Sure, thank you. I have a lot of respect for Mr. Najarian, so I do appreciate his comments. Just going back to the flyer, I do think, I do think it's important. I want to respond to Mr. Najarian again. I want to be very respectful, but I would, my opinion is, it's not that civil service isn't the best. It is really broken. It's a broken system. And that's why, if you look on the flyer, currently, there's 44 Police and Fire Departments in the state that have withdrawn. All the town managers I talked to, everybody's getting out for a reason because it's broken. And it's broken, and it makes it incredibly difficult for the chiefs under this current structure to hire. They're stuck with lists. They're stuck with lists that might not have any people on them. They're stuck with tests that the Civil Service Commission puts out, that the courts have invalidated because they're unfair, and they have to scrap the lists. It makes discipline incredibly difficult. It would be much more effective to ultimately hire the best people for Rockland, maybe giving preference to Rockland residents, for example. There's a number of reasons why, and I just really want to stress that this is all about putting systems in place that doesn't exactly copy civil service, because if we were going to do that, there'd be no reason to get out of civil service. We need to modernize and to be able to help the chiefs hire the best people for Rockland. And if they didn't mention it already, I should highlight that police officers and firefighters that are currently in the department that are protected by civil service will keep their protection for the entire duration of their employment. They don't say grandfathered any longer, but exempted, so all current employees will be exempted. But it's really all about getting the best people, and they're very careful with their language about use of the word "preference," because that means different things for different people. There will certainly be, like they said, extremely strong consideration, all things being equal, for veterans. That's their goal. They would absolutely want to do that, and the policies and procedures will be in writing, so it'll be very clear. There can't be nepotism in this kind of structure. So I hope that's helpful. I just wanted to give that additional context. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Mr. Henderson?
Again, Tom Henderson, 102 Arlington Street. When we negotiated this, if you went back when I started on the department 23 years ago and said that we would be looking at this article, I'd say we would never be here. But things have drastically changed in the civil service program that I started with to what is here today. And unfortunately, the process is very tumultuous for the current members and promotions, and even trying to hire. You could have a preference all day long, but it depends if you're a paramedic. It depends if you have certain certifications. So obviously, our intent is not to discredit anybody, whether it's a fallen firefighter, a family member, or a veteran. And when we were negotiating this, and as we continued to negotiate our policies, is to give considerations to those new members coming in that are veterans that have served this country, and we want to make sure that they are considered and brought to the top and interviewed in our process. I think our process will be expedited, and we'll give more consideration to those employees, especially our residents and veterans that live in our community. So thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Hi, Lori Childs, 234 North Avenue. I wanted to address a nepotism issue that got brought up. In the civil service system, current police and firefighters in many towns can, you know, tell their sons or cousins or nephews to, hey, get on the list, and you'll come up. I think there's more of a chance of nepotism with the civil service system as it is, first of all. Second of all, our police and fire departments ought to reflect the colors of our community and the nature of our community and the richness of our communities. So having women and people of color, I think it'll be a lot easier, because they don't apply as much to civil service, the civil service program than not. So I definitely support getting out of that system.
I will take, I'd already said that Mr. Simpson could speak, and then...
Most of you folks know me, anyway. I'm sergeant with the Police Department, been 29 years. I just wanted to come behind firefighter Henderson and just say that we do support it. I know what Brian said and some of the other folks. We all know each other. Our veterans are the most important. Our residents are the most important, and our jobs that we are completing for the community is the important part here. So we just wanted to say that my local, as superiors, the patrol local, we all support the chief and his decisions, and we're just asking you to move this forward and pass it through. I appreciate it.
I am going to let Mr. Officers of Long speak, because they have two different unions down there, and I will let them speak.
Thank you. I'll be brief. My name is Joe Zalinski. I'm the union president for the Rockland Patrol Officers. This is something that we, between the chief and the town, that we didn't take lightly. We put a lot of work into it. It's my job to look out for the new hires, the current members, and that's going to continue to be my job. And even in the hiring process, myself and Chief Ziole sat down and went over the policies for hours and hours, and I'm going to look out for the hiring as well, because I have a say in the policies, because they affect the members when they come through. So I ask you to support this article. I ask you to support Chief Ziole, Chief Duffy, they've done a lot of work. I ask you to support my members who voted to approve this, and we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion. Article 68, will the town vote to revoke the acceptance of civil service laws for the uniformed members of the Police Department in the Town of Rockland effective July 1st, 2023? The rest is in print there. All those in favor of adopting Article 68 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 69, will the town vote to revoke the acceptance of civil service laws for the Town of Rockland uniformed members of the Fire Department of all ranks effective July 1st, 2023, thereby removing the Fire Department from the provisions of the civil service laws? And you have the rest of it in print. All those in favor of adopting Article 69 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Now, Articles 70, 71, and 72 have to do with the town to let the Select Board acquire the Mount Pleasant Cemetery, and I'll tell you the explanation, and Doug Lapp will give you a very brief. In 2022, the Board of Selectmen were notified by the operators and representatives of the Mount Pleasant Cemetery that they were unable to continue to operate the private cemetery. The cemetery contains the graves of generations of Rockland residents, including graves of veterans. The Selectmen agreed to accept all, a gift of land, the records of the sale of lots and burials, cemetery, and the balance of the funds set aside for perpetual care and to administer the cemetery, which currently only permits seasonal burials, provided the town meeting approves the gift of land, which the Board is recommending in order to preserve the cemetery and prevent the cemetery from falling apart. Articles 71 and 72 go to the bylaws, and I'm going to let Town Administrator Lapp, who's been involved in this, to give you a brief, and then we'll vote on each of the three articles.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is late. I will try to be brief, but also cover everything that's important. This cemetery, for those of you that aren't familiar with it, it's off of Liberty and Pleasant Street, kind of behind VFW Drive, and as the moderator said, there's a lot of very prominent veteran graves here. This situation is really like a town administrator's biggest nightmare, where there's, it's a private cemetery, very important one in town, with prominent markers and graves, and the current managers of the cemetery, an older couple who no longer reside in Rockland, came to me one day with a box of records, saying, we're no longer able to manage this anymore. You got to take it over. We, of course, not only do we not have a cemetery division, we don't even have a Department of Public Works. So this has been a very, very difficult thing to deal with over the last six months or so. What we put together is a temporary memorandum of agreement with the current, the prior group, that we would take it over until we get to a town meeting vote where we could formally accept the cemetery. Because again, you know, the Town of Rockland won't go out of business, and there were no other nonprofit groups that would be suitable for the Town of Rockland that could have taken over this cemetery. So again, given the fact that we don't have a Department of Public Works yet, and we don't have any staff, I worked out an arrangement with the Town of Hanover, where at no charge, the Town of Hanover is managing the administration of the cemetery. They have a DPW with a cemetery division for their own cemeteries, so they graciously agreed to help us temporarily until we're able to staff it up ourselves, so that if someone needs to get buried at the Mount Pleasant Cemetery in Rockland, they're actually going to call the Hanover Department of Public Works. They have, we digitized all of the plot cards. The Hanover Department of Public Works will then work with the funeral home and our Highway Superintendent Dave Taylor to properly mark out the grave. So what these three articles do is, the first article would formally accept the cemetery. The second article, Article 71, would authorize a special act being sent to the state legislature, where we would have the Board of Selectmen become cemetery commissioners, because any town that owns a cemetery has to have cemetery commissioners. And then Article 72 would amend our bylaws by having cemetery bylaws. So again, we had to act very quickly to put this together. Again, it's a very prominent cemetery. We owe it to those that are buried there and for their loved ones to have this properly maintained. There is land available in the cemetery to sell additional new plots. At this time, given our lack of staffing, we're not going to do that, but there are families that have already bought plots, and once the cemetery reopened on April 1st, we've already started getting calls about burials. So it is important that we fulfill these obligations. The funding that the cemetery has, most of it has already been transferred to the town. Upon successful town meeting to vote tonight, the rest of all of the funding will come to the town. That was one of the revolving funds that we voted earlier in town meeting, was the Mount Pleasant Cemetery Revolving Fund. Down the road, just so you're all prepared, in the future, if the Charter Review Committee at some point makes a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to reorganize part of our local government toward a more proper Department of Public Works, we'll need to have a cemetery division, because ultimately, the Town of Hanover won't do this for us indefinitely, and we'll no longer be able to continue using private contractors. We'll have to take this on ourselves, but one step at a time. Tonight, all we're doing is voting to accept it, establishing the Selectmen as cemetery commissioners, and then creating a bylaw, just getting this started, and then we'll continue to work on this as we go forward. Last comment I'll make, we were fortunate that the group that was giving us the cemetery had all of their documentation in order. Deeds and documents that needed to be filed with the Secretary of State, everything was in order, so we're able to successfully accept this if town meeting votes it, and that's in contrast to a different cemetery and a different article, which I'll talk about in a few moments. So I hope that's clear. If not, I'm happy to try to answer any questions. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions about the Mount Pleasant Cemetery? Seeing none. Article number 70, as printed in your booklet. All those in favor of adopting Article 70, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 71, as printed in your book. All those in favor of adopting Article 71 signify with a show of hands. I'm sorry, was there a question?
John was telling me earlier, he's excited that he really wanted to be a Selectman, but he wanted to be a cemetery commissioner. I'm just kidding. I come to you with a concern about Article 71. Article 71 proposes a new addition to our general bylaws, creating a cemetery commission consisting of the five members of the Board of Selectmen. The reason they need to petition the General Court is because this is not a typical role or responsibility for a Selectman. While it may seem like a small matter, I urge you to consider the potential conflict of interest that could arise if the Selectmen were also to serve as cemetery commissioners. The Selectmen have a fiduciary responsibility to act in the best interest of the entire town, not just the cemetery. The Board of Selectmen is an elected body of officials that serve as the executive arm of the town government. Their role is to act in the best interest of the entire town, which includes all citizens and not just a civic group or commission such as a cemetery. As elected officials, the Selectmen are entrusted with the responsibility to make decisions that are fair and equitable for all citizens, regardless of the individual interests. They must prioritize the needs of the entire town and allocate resources to areas that require attention or development. Furthermore, the Selectmen are responsible for overseeing the finances of the town, which means they must ensure that the taxpayers' money is spent in a way that is efficient, effective, and transparent. This fiduciary responsibility extends to all aspects of the town governance, including the cemetery. Therefore, if the Selectmen also serve as a cemetery commissioners, there is a potential for conflict of interest that can undermine their fiduciary responsibility to the town as a whole. In conclusion, I implore you to consider the potential conflicts of interest that could arise if the Selectmen serve as cemetery commissioners. We need to ensure that our town operates in a transparent, accountable, and in the best interest of the citizens of Rockland. These roles need to be separated. The Selectmen should think twice about being, before taking on the job, unless they want to dig their own grave with all the cemetery responsibilities. I motion, I know it's late. I motion to pass over Article 71, but also for Article 72, change the language, would be to create a cemetery commission consisting of five members appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, may I make a comment?
Mr. Lapp?
So I appreciate Mr. Minahan's questions. I would argue, well, first of all, the last town I was in had Selectmen as cemetery commissioners. I haven't taken a poll of all the towns, but it's not that unusual. I would argue that the points that you made, the Selectmen deal with those issues every single day. So yes, they're responsible for the whole town, have a fiduciary responsibility for the whole town, but they also have to make decisions about individual departments as well. A classic example, just earlier in the warrant, we were talking about some sewer articles, and we were commingling in those articles a million dollars that the Board of Selectmen voted from ARPA funds to give to the sewer department. So they use their judgment and try to do what's best for the town. Again, ultimately, we need a DPW with a cemetery division. That is the best practice for communities managing cemeteries, managing all their infrastructure. And there's really, there's lots of different departments that the Selectmen have to make decisions on. They have to decide what goes on the warrant, what the budget will look like. They have to make all kinds of decisions like that, and this is, in my opinion especially, just starting out, having to act quickly. I think the Selectmen is the best choice. They are accountable, and everything will be discussed in public meetings. So that's my personal opinion, and the Board concurred. I hope that's helpful.
Mr. Clifford, since this was not recommended by the Finance Committee, do we need a motion on this?
Yes, we do. Someone has to move the question. That's correct.
Okay. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? All those in favor of adopting Article 71 as printed in your booklets signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 72 is printed in your booklet. I need a motion, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? All those in favor of, oh my goodness, all those in favor of approving Article 72 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 73 is a motion that has to do with the Community Preservation Committee, and I would call on Selectman John Ellid to read the motion.
Okay. I'd like to make the following motion, that the town, acting on the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, vote to appropriate the sum of $55,000 previously appropriated under Article 44 of the May 3, 2021 Annual Town Meeting, to acquire by eminent domain a 2.19 acre, more or less, portion of the so-called Spring Lake Cemetery Association property, so-called the budding Studley Pond, as shown on the plan entitled Taking Plan, Market Street, Rockland, Massachusetts, prepared by the Town of Rockland by Merrill Engineering and Land Surveyors, 427 Columbia Road, Hanover, Massachusetts, 02339, dated August 29, 2022, on file in the office of the Town Clerk for open space conservation and recreation or public park purposes, including all acquisition costs and expenses related thereto, and that the Board of Selectmen are authorized to execute an order of taking in... in a form acceptable to town council and enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments, including the conveyance of a perpetual conservation restriction on the parcel in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 184, as required by Section 12A of Mass. Massachusetts General Law, Section 44B, as may be necessary on behalf of the town to effectuate said acquisition or take any other action relative thereto.
Do I have a second? I have a second. This was Finance Committee recommended deferring to the Community Preservation Committee. Is Steve O'Donnell still here?
Steve O'Donnell, 71 Winding Way, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. The town already voted to fund this. This is just a means of taking this property, and we'll use those funds to pay the land owner. Do you have anything else, Mr. Moderator?
Okay, thank you, Steve. All those in favor of adopting Article 73 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. I want to go back to Article 70. I misread that. Article 70 was the first one on Mount Pleasant Cemetery. I should have asked, because it was not, didn't have a Finance Committee recommendation, I should have asked for a motion and a second. So when I get a motion on Article 70, as written, second, all those in favor of adopting Article 70 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 74, Mr. Corbett, let's just do 74, 75, and 76. These are three zoning articles, and the chair recognizes Mr. Corbett.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Section 5, the Rockland Planning Board held an advertised public hearing to review on the articles related to the zoning changes submitted for the annual town meeting warrant for the town of Rockland. The public hearing was held on Tuesday, April 18, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the community room at the community center at McKinley School. The board reviewed and unanimously recommended the following article changes, as submitted for Articles 74, 75, 76.
Thank you. Article 74, will the town vote to amend the Rockland Town Code Division 3 zoning bylaws, Article 2 definitions, and word usage by deleting the words and definitions associated with the word kennel and inserting in place thereof the following new definition? Kennel, a pack, a collection of dogs on a single premise, including a commercial boarding or training kennel, commercial breeder kennel, domestic charitable corporation kennel, personal kennel, or veterinary kennel, as terms, as those terms are defined in Mass. General Law's Chapter 136A, or take any other action relative thereto. These were requested by the animal control officer, and Mr. Corbett, I need a motion to adopt?
Planning Board recommends a motion to adopt.
Second, all those, this, I need a two-thirds, I'd like it unanimous. All those in favor of adopting Article 74 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 75, will the town vote to amend the Rockland Town Code Division 3 with all those numbers? By deleting the words and definitions associated with the words or phrase "non-commercial kennel" and inserting in place thereof the word phrase "personal kennel," and further, by deleting the words and definitions associated with the words or phrase "commercial kennel" and inserting "commercial boarding" or "training kennel," and so on and so on. And further, that the town clerk be authorized to make clerical, editorial, and other adjustments related to incorporating said changes into the bylaw, take any other action submitted by the animal control officer. Motion, Mr. Corbett?
Planning Board makes a motion to recommend.
Second, I need a two-thirds unanimous, preferably all those in favor of adopting Article 75, signify with a show of hands. Anybody opposed, that's unanimous. Article number 76, will the town vote to amend the Rockland Town Code Division 3 zoning bylaws to do with commercial kennels by deleting the title of said section, Commercial Kennels, and kennels and other personal, oh my God, we're going to get overrun by dogs. And further, that the town clerk be authorized to make clerical and editorial other adjustments relating to incorporating said changes into the zoning bylaw, requested by the animal control officer, Mr. Corbett?
Planning Board makes a motion to recommend.
Second, all those in favor of adopting, I'd like it unanimous, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. You got to take a break for a minute. We're getting there. Article 77, will the town vote to adopt General Law Chapter 148, Section 26H, lodging and boarding houses, automatic sprinkler systems, or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the fire chief, approved by the Board of Selectmen, so I'm going to need a motion on this. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve, a second? Second, all those in favor of adopting Article 77 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 78, will the town vote to amend the Rockland Town Code Division 2 general bylaws, Part 2, general legislation, Chapter 280 Marijuana, by inserting a new article, limitation on the number of retail marijuana establishment as follows? Limited, limitation on retail establishments, the number of retail marijuana establishments in town should be limited to 45% the number of licenses licensed under General Law Chapter 13815, also known as package store license, or take any other action relative thereto? I need a motion. Motion to approve? Do I have a second? All those in favor of Article 78 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. 79, will the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law's Chapter 40, Section 22R-F, authorizing any town board or officer empowered to issue a license, permit, certificate, or to render a service or perform work for a person or class of persons, to fix reasonable fees for all such licenses, permits, and certificates issued pursuant to statutes or regulations wherein the entire proceeds of the fee remain with the town, and to fix reasonable charges to be paid for any services rendered or work performed by the town or any department thereof for any person or class of persons, provided however that in the case of a board or officer appointed by an elected board, the fixing of such fees shall be subject to the review and approval of such elected board, or take any other action relative thereto, submitted by the Board of Selectmen. I need a motion. I have, do I have a motion, I have a motion to accept, do I have a second? All those in favor of adopting Article 79 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Will the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to request a special act of the general court in the form set forth below, amending the town charter to remove all references to the Board of Selectmen to Select Board, and replace references to selectmen or select man with a gender-neutral term of Select Board Member or Member, provided however that the general court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Board of Selectmen approve amendments to the bill before enactment by the general court, to combine this article with any other changes to the town charter adopted by this town meeting into one special act for submission to the legislature, provided further that the Board of Selectmen is hereby authorized to approve amendments which will be within the general public objectives. You have the sections there in front of you. The act shall, the act shall take effect upon its passage. It was requested by the charter review committee. I need a motion. To, a motion to approve, do I have a second? All those in favor of adopting Article 80 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 81, will the town vote to amend the Rockland Town Code? Definitions, and this is, Planning Board Associate Member. This basically, if I correct, Mr. Corbett, is going to add a Associate Planning Board Member to your board?
Yes, if we have a special permit that comes before us, that way it gives us an alternate member to fill in for somebody that can't make it if there's a conflict or something.
This is on a special, okay, special permit application, the case of absence, okay. Do I have a motion, Mr. Corbett?
Planning Board makes a motion to recommend.
And you also held that same open meeting on April 18, 2023, at 6:30 in the community room at the community center McKinley School.
That is correct.
I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor of adopting Article 81 signify with a show of hands? And I need a, I hope for unanimous. Anybody opposed, it's unanimous. Article 82, we're getting there. Will the town vote to extend the term of the ad hoc charter review committee until June 30, 2024, or take any action relative thereto? I need a motion to approve. Motion, do I have a second? All those in favor of adopting Article 82 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Is Mr. Hickey here, Superintendent Hickey? Bob Mahoney is here. Ladies and gentlemen, this is, will be the last article because we've already done Article 84 earlier. I'd like to thank all of yous for coming out tonight, and for all of yous who stayed here. That was very nice of you to do. We couldn't have got through the business without it. I can't talk anymore. My wife will be happy. But anyways, to see if, Article 83, to see if the town will approve the amended socio-regional vocational school district regional agreement, which is on file in the town clerk's office, or take any other action relative thereto? The explanation, the regional agreement, last updated in 2018, is being updated primarily to include, the town of Marshfield is a member of the regional school district, which would take effect July 1, 2024. Other changes to the agreement are outlined in the agreement on file. This is requested by the socio-regional vocational school committee. It was, I'm looking for a motion. Motion, and I have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion. All those in favor of adopting Article 83 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. I would entertain a motion to dissolve the annual town meeting? Second? Thank you very much.